Good evening, welcome back and we are ready to begin our workshop session. It is six twenty PM, we have a full quorum present. The first item on our workshop is present as a presentation on the 2023-2024 budget by Ms. Felord Bradley. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have a presentation, it's not really supposed to say presentation, but what we have before you is the, I emailed you a list of the items that were compiled during the budget workshop that you all wanted to discuss further for consideration. I have list, on the schedule, I have listed the departments, the actual requests made by Mayor and Council, and the funding, the cost for it. And then I show where the middle column where it says request funded general fund, those items that could be funded are listed under that second column. And then the rest, request funded other funds are the items that were funded by other revenue sources, other funds, and then the response. So I'll basically give it back to you to decide how you would like to discuss those items.
We'll start with questions, Councilman Clay?
Pardon?
Do you have questions on?
Are we gonna walk through it one line by line, or how do you want to proceed, Mayor?
Uh, well, if there are any particular questions about any of the, of the information presented thus far, and then we'll go line by line.
Okay, so specific question on, on a line item, or just in general on the budget?
Uh, on any particular line item in this, in this.
All right, well, I have a question on, uh, in particular, the last item on the list, and that, uh, let me see, where it is. Grants and aid request, and I don't think that's legal, City Attorney?
Yes, the city would need to have a substantial benefit in return to, to give that out. And generally, a substantial benefit would be a typical city service. So I'm not, I'm not aware of what Project Torch is. But as of right now, from the limited information I know, it would be a gratuity.
Okay. All right, any other questions, Councilman Clay?
Yeah, I've got a question on the item I challenged when the budget was presented, and that was the additional, uh, assistant for a Mayor and Council, and, I have two actual questions associated with that. Where, if we get at such a person, where would they be located? And what would be the cost in creating the facility to locate them? Because it's one thing to talk about salary rate, but there's the, you know, where are you gonna put them? That's another aspect, and how much is it gonna cost to put them there?
Looking for Jackson.
I'll take it. I believe we'd have to probably look at a space planner. We have not projected what those costs would be, but I wouldn't see where those costs would be prohibitive, but we would need to.
You believe it would be, or would not be?
I don't, I don't believe the cost would be prohibitive to look at the outlay of the space.
Okay, and my second question would be in that regard. I think that if we're going to employ additional assistance, that there should be one executive assistant to Mayor and Council. And I think that if they have, another person is brought in to help with the workload, that the executive assistant to Mayor and Council should be assigning the work as needed to those people. And I'm not in favor of it unless that happens, because I, I'm not looking, I mean, hey, I'd like to have my private assistant too. Not that I need one, I do pretty well by myself with the help of Deborah. But I think that, that needs to be agreed upon before that person is brought in. I know it's in the budget, it's in the budget. And let's see, do I have anything else? I had one question with regard to police patrol. Can somebody help me out with what the, this is on the third page, right at the top. What is a lot camera? It may be spelled wrong, or maybe I just am not familiar with the.
Yep. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. It's a parking lot camera, like the cameras that you might have seen in Target, a Walmart parking lot that sits in the middle, and it captures everything within a certain amount.
Okay, so it's, it's intended to be portable and moved into a parking lot?
That's correct.
And where are we planning to use it?
The camera was requested by Councilman Gates, so it will be moved throughout entire city.
So is it just for Ward four?
No, it's for the entire city.
For the entire city, and we would use it maybe when we had an event or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea.
Wait, hold on, any other questions, Councilman Clay?
That's good, I'm good.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Carr?
This, uh, this camera, is this one of the kind that are in the martyr parking lots that, that,
Yes.
that elevates up with the, with the, it elevates up and down to certain heights?
That's correct.
And there's a box in the top of it where someone sits perched?
Possibly, yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's, that's the kind we're talking about. So that kind, it's movable on wheels, where it can be towed to?
Yes, it's movable, it's a mobile camera.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I've seen the martyr ones, the ones in the martyr, like at College Park. Okay, and that answers it. I guess I want to go through some of all of this, more or less, if we're going through everything.
We'll go line item by line, line item in a moment, but if you have any particular questions, this will be the opportunity to ask those.
Well, uh, basically just discussion, so as we go line by line, we discuss everything, and I've got discussion on just about every line. So if we wanna wait on that, and we just discuss it as well as questions, it's not just questions, it's gonna be some discussion. So if we need to wait on that, then we can wait on that if we're going line by line.
I will ask for, if, if there's consensus on expending those items. And so if you have particular questions now, would be the time to ask them.
Well, you just said we're gonna do discussion line by line, yeah, I thought if I heard you, great.
We're gonna, we're gonna go line by line, but if there's consensus on a particular item to move forward and put it in the budget, then we'll have further discussion, but the first question I will ask is if there is consensus to add that. If there's not consensus, then we're gonna keep on moving line by line.
Okay, so you want me to give consensus on each line whether or not I would like to add that?
A lot of the line items aren't, aren't even to be added.
Right, right.
It's, it's just a, it's just a report of the status.
Yes.
Well, I figured it'd be easier if we are discussing it line by line, we can go down it line by line if that's, because that's what I heard we were gonna be doing. And that way, we can cover each line and, discuss the pros and cons of each line.
Mayor, maybe we just should start going line by line and,
That makes the most sense.
Let me, let me make sure, any questions, any particular questions, Councilman Allen?
No, I just wanted citywide healthcare insurance kind of explain that, that line, but we can do it when we get there, that's all. You answered a lot of my questions today, so.
Councilman Gay, any particular question?
I'll wait till we go line by line.
All right, is there consensus on forty thousand dollars for the bite of Christmas party?
I think, uh, what have we, what have we been spending, Michelle, in the last couple of years? I guess was last year the only year post COVID that we?
I understood it was two years in a row, and it was around three thousand dollars just for the dinner, and then another thousand dollars from Solanius and the awards themselves.
Well, but prior to that, Michelle.
I don't have the.
I, I remember numbers of something like seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, seventy or eighty, and I think obviously that's not gonna happen anymore, but I think, and I mentioned it before, that I think this year is very important in terms of Six West property, we're looking at the interest that we have thus far, that we want to make sure we maybe do something a little bit extra special outside of what we've done in the last two years. So I, I'm thinking, I mean, I'm thinking minimum ten, twelve thousand, I think would be a strong showing. We're coming into the holidays for the party. The pedestrian bridge will be up, a big portion of Six West can be seen, and Rhodes, Lottie Miller can be seen, you know, there. North side will be going up. So I think it would be really good to attract people and bring them here at that point in time where we're making some progress. And I wanna make an extra good showing this year in terms of that being our preeminent real estate developer confab, where they can see what we've got to offer. So my, my thought would be ten to twelve, to make sure we make a good showing, and that we are, you know, we've got property for sale, we're looking to develop.
Councilman Allen?
I thi, I think it's a good opportunity for sponsors to become involved for the Christmas party, and I think that that would be a good way to add the additional ten or twelve thousand.
I would concur with that.
All right, so we're at three, you said around three now? All right, so, I'm sorry. Michelle, three or, three or four, is it?
Yeah, it was about three thousand just for meal, things like that, but there's like another thousand for incidentals, additional camera work, and so around four thousand.
So four all in. Okay, so to get to the twelve, we add in another eight thousand, we, we, so we find, we fundraise, we set a goal for, for sponsorships?
Where, where's the breakpoint? Where's the breakpoint on what you need? It seems to me you can have, you have filet mignon, or you have hot dogs, you have someone come in and do video production, or you do it homegrown, there, there are some levels in there, and I don't know where they are. I, I think we need at least as much as what Councilman Carr is talking about. But if, if it turns out that for three thousand dollars more, making fifteen, we can make a dramatic difference in the appearance of the event, then it might be worth that extra three thousand, I don't know, that's my problem.
I'm, I'm kinda looking for whichever level will attract the most people, developers, folks to this event in December as possible, with, with, within, you know, reason, so, so whatever. I see in my mind, you know, it's, it's an evening event. So if we have large photos of our development sites, a lot of some of the Six West site plans, large, where people can see them, you know, stuff like this.
I, I would say if you gave us a dollar amount, I know working with Mercedes amazing team, we will make the most out of it, it will be special, however, whatever dollar amount you set, and then we'll set goals for impact. For me, it would be about the impact and what, what's the results of having the event.
I thought we did a great event last year for four thousand dollars, honestly.
I think it was a great.
Still, I'm speaking, sir. I think it was a great event for four thousand dollars, and we had an opportunity to invite our folks, and I agree with Councilman Allen's point about the opportunity to get partnerships from those folks that we want to identify. This is the first thing on the list, and we have lots of opportunities to make impact within this city. I'm concerned that spending it in this way, when we've spent, let's see, I think seventy thousand dollars in 2019 on this event, and tens of thousands of dollars prior to that. I don't know, and I'm not sure our economic development department can talk about any leads that came from doing this event. I think we have to be targeted in terms of our ability to not just throw a party because we're throwing a party, but ensure that we are trying to reach the people that can actually invest in this development. And I think that if we have the same budget as last year, and then continue to move forward with those partnerships, I think we can have a great event.
I, I would agree with the part, when I talked about a top line figure, I'm not talking about it all coming from the budget. I, I would agree that that's an opportunity for partners.
And I think the top line figure around twelve thousand, I think that's where we need to be. And I don't, if, whether we get it with sponsorships or a combination thereof, I'm fine with it either way. But here's the thing, yes, we've done these in the past, but this year is this year, and this year is different. It's a whole nother proposition here, because we have the infrastructure into Six West. We have development all around the outskirts here. So this year is different, and this year, I do believe if we play our cards right, we can get a vast majority of that property under contract. But we have to let people know it's available, and we have to let people know we're ready to go now, and we're building out now where people can see it, and we can show it to them. So how, whatever you have to do to reach, reach that level to bring in and attract the most folks and developers, let's, let's, let's go all out this year. And going from eighty thousand dollars to twelve thousand is not going all out financially. But let's maximize to that amount and get as much bang for that as we can.
Councilman Allen?
Can, can we agree to, to go with the current budget and develop sponsorships? And then if for some reason we do need additional money, come back to the city?
What is the current budget, by the way?
I believe it is three thousand dollars.
She just said four thousand dollars, all in, if I heard her right. You said three thousand for the dinner, but the awards and the other stuff comes to four?
It's about four thousand dollars all in, given the costs of the awards themselves, and additional camera footage and promotion.
That's what I thought I heard.
Three thousand for the event itself that we pay. Now, that was this year, additional funds were provided from Main Street that supplemented it, I want us, for the, for drinks, so it was supplemented even on that.
What, what if we just set it five thousand dollars to come out of the budget? Anything above that comes out of contributions or, or what have you, sponsorships or whatever. That takes care of the uncertainty in the budget of whether things are gonna be more expensive this year, et cetera, et cetera.
Is that amenable?
So five thousand?
Five thousand.
From us with a goal?
In the budget, and.
Sponsorship goal.
Ten or twelve, if we can get sponsorships, but the only thing that's coming out of the city budget is five.
Right, with a sponsorship goal of seven, are they about?
Is there consensus on that, five thousand?
I'm good with it.
Yes.
All right, engineering services with Mr. Moore, we don't have a dollar figure on that. And Mr. Myers, question for you on that particular line item. Would those services be redundant from what Mr. McPherson is doing and has done in the Six West development?
As far as I, from my understanding, yes, sir, yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, sorry.
My hair's short. Is, is there consensus on, on this item?
Uh, no, I don't think those services would be redundant at all, not in the least. And I don't know if we have an understanding of the value of what I believe the type of institutional knowledge we could get and retain and keep for perpetuity for projects throughout this city. City manager, I understand you had a chance to, to reach out to Mr. Moore. What are your thoughts in terms of if you think this is something that we've needed? My thought was this could be something at a reasonable rate, actually underneath your authority, of, of, of ten thousand or under. Probably to get something like this done, I would imagine. But I think this would pay dividends for years to come if we get that complete encyclopedic knowledge that, that I know he does have.
Councilman, I've only had a brief conversation with Mr. Moore, he was out of town at the time. If I moved forward with this based on my assessment, which is far from complete, and if this would be needed or not. I mean, obviously, we've got a city engineer position that is vacant. I don't have a full enough understanding of any discussions that have been had with Mr. Moore to make a recommendation at this point, and I am more reliant on the city council.
That's my thought, I, I think it's worthwhile to get, to retain that institutional knowledge and to archive it.
Well, it seems to me that what we're looking for is not actual doing a, a complete analysis, but filling holes. Where is it that we're lacking in our knowledge of the infrastructure? Where is it that we're lacking? And, and Jackson, maybe you're gonna say, I don't think we're lacking anywhere. We're in, we're in great shape, we know, we know wherever manhole is, we know where every sewer line is, et cetera, et cetera. Or maybe your answer is, well, maybe ten percent of them we don't know. And that means you bring in Mr. Moore and have him, pay him X amount an hour for yea many hours, and you have him fill in the gaps. I mean, that's, that's the job I see, I don't see him going through and totally describing the city's infrastructure, because we already have knowledge on that, we've already got information in GIS and so forth. Does that make sense at all?
Mayor, let me, let me take, let me take that one. I, I think Councilman Clay has given the information that I could better explain what my position would be. I think Councilman Carr referred to this as well. I'm focused on getting positions filled, and in my report tonight, I'll give you an update on how we're proceeding with some of those vacancies. We are making progress. The city manager does have up to ten thousand dollars. It is not uncommon that when a new position is filled, such as a city engineer, that being able to consult with a previous engineer, if that expertise doesn't exist in the organization, that we've got some latitude in doing that. So I would suggest, let me move ahead with getting a fuller complement of resources, but if we have the need for it in the next few months, we'll certainly be prepared to consult with Mr. Moore, whoever.
We just absorb it, is what you're saying at this, at this point?
Yes, good.
Okay.
All right, MIS Information Technology, the Assistant Network Administration Administrator, Ms. Felord Bradley, you said the funding availability is limited for that position.
Yes, that was, um, one of the positions that was reclassed during the fiscal year, and now he's requesting that it be added back.
Right, and that's, that is for the network administrator. Right now, we have one network administer, administrator, I believe.
Correct.
And if that network administrator gets sick, or is disabled for some reason, or what have you, it would be very difficult to address, hacking of the system, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we, I would strongly recommend that we consider a network, assistant network administrator, not just from a, not, uh, loading, man loading standpoint, but from the standpoint that we have a, a certain amount of redundancy there, that somebody else knows our network as well as, as we need it known in an emergency.
What's the consensus of the body?
Uh, out there, a couple of questions. And this was the position, uh, one was a, a switch out and a, a swap out and a bump, is that, is that, is IT back here?
Robert is, but I don't.
Robert, that was the, that was the one that was along, something along that arrangement, or this is the same one?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, but, so, so this would be, is this the one with the increase in duties?
Yes, sir.
From what it was, and you're renaming it with extra duties, that was, that was this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, I remember now. Look, you know, my thing is this, there's certain positions that we need, and here's, here's my other thing. You know, I don't have favorites, and I don't play favorite departments at the end of the day. Now, everybody's fighting for their positions, understandable. If I'm a department head, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight for my positions too. But I don't have favorites, I don't have a favorite department. If you, you need what you need, city manager, we wanna try to get everybody what, what we can get them. Does that mean you're gonna get everything? No. But I see a pattern on this list that I've seen before, that's all I'll leave it, I'll just leave it at that. But I, I support you getting what you need there on that one.
I, I just have one, where's the, where would the money come from out there, where would, we'd have to take that money from?
I would have to figure it out.
Mayor, let me, let me.
From the general fund, or?
General fund, yes, it would be a, because right now, based on, based on what's, what's funded, that's pretty much what I have available to move around, but we would have to figure out how to fund that as well.
Mr. Hawthorne?
Yeah, let me, let me offer some overview on this exercise that we're going through. And I do have some concern going through at this fine of a level, because you've still got a full city council meeting, we've got to go back into executive session, and I'm just going to tell you, at, at this pace, you're not going to get through. I don't, I don't want the finance director to take on too much responsibility as you go through this list, and you're only through the third item so far, and now we're getting into some bigger cost tag items. She and the staff have done a job, and I give her a lot of credit, with limited resources, presenting to you.
presenting to you a balanced budget, and that's all you've got at this point. You have other options with your policy decisions, such as taking from fund balance, which isn't recommended for recurring expenses, increasing fees and/or taxes. So it costs something where we are at this point. I have not had the opportunity, it's simple as that, to go through a budget cycle to give you some sound recommendations. For this particular one, and I'm not picking on any departments either, but one of the things that I've asked for are the resources that each department has provided to me in the form of an organization structure, and I've talked to you about making some recommendations, hopefully in the next few weeks. And looking at this particular department, I will tell you that I've shared with some of my staff, not necessarily the department director, who I haven't had a chance to talk to, IT departments and organizations that I've been in, it's pretty significant, the resources that we've got now. If we're talking about strictly from succession planning, or if somebody is on vacation, it's not an assessment that I think is strong enough to say, you know, let's add a hundred thousand dollars, maybe in a year, maybe in six months, I'll come back to you and say, I'm convinced now, but I don't see any urgency with this position at this point in time. I will tell you that the department director's out all of this week, and Robert is here filling in. So with the number of resources that are in that department, I don't know that we're hurting even when it comes to network administrator.
Mr. Hawthorne, I think we may, you had the opportunity to review this list, correct?
Yes.
It may be best to get your impressions on each of these as we move through and go from there. I understand that ultimately, this is a policy decision the council needs to make, however, I think your insight is welcome and needed. So in regard to... There have been recommendations made on page one, and the only actual funding that has, that has been listed out from the general fund is to relaunch the employee down payment assistance. Is there... In regard to the assistant network administrator, I heard Councilman Clay and Councilman Karn express a desire to get that in the budget. We don't have a source at this point, other than the general fund, which is, that would be imbalancing the budget, if you will. What is, what are your thoughts, Councilman Allen and Councilman Gay?
I think that maybe we need to take a step back, let our new city manager take a look, come back to us and say, in a few months, whatever it takes, and say, okay, yes, I do think we need, no, I do not think we need this person, but I think it's too early for us to come to him and say, hey, give us your opinion tonight. I think, I think we need to find where we can find these. I don't wanna, I hate to take things out of the general fund, I hate debt, I don't think we need to get any further down, but I think the more he learns, and he's on a fast track, but the more the city manager learns, the more he understands the money that's gonna be coming in, the more he understands what's going on with the departments, and, you know, he's challenged with the job of running the city, and I think we need to listen to his ideas that he has on what he would like to do, but it's too early right now, so I think, you know, we can change things as we go along in the budget. So it's not set in stone, we can't move things around later on, so I think we just need to maybe take a pause here and come back at another time before we have to approve, when do we have to have the final?
Advertisement for the first public hearing goes out May 3rd, and the first hearing is, I think it's May 15th, and the second hearing is June the 3rd, June the 5th, right? Yeah, June the 5th.
So we're gonna have to do that this month.
Councilman Gay, your thoughts?
Shavane, can you go back to the last page? Let me recommend a lot, I don't see it.
Yes, sir, that's on page, that's at the top of page three.
Oh, my recommendation would be that we follow the recommendation of the finance director and the city manager, because there's too much on here, we would never agree on any of this. They made a sound decision, I'd just rather ride with their decision, and we revisit this maybe the next quarter or something.
I have a, city manager, I've got a suggestion that may be a happy medium, and just give me some rope here. I've administered quite a few budgets here, we have large budgets here. I handled two of the Fulton County budgets, one point two billion dollars each. My suggestion is this, now, we don't wanna blow your budget out here, so I get that. My suggestion would be this, let's do what we're doing right now in terms of a budget request markup, and we come up with a shortened list from this, from a consensus. You take that shortened list, which would probably be half of these requests, we give that back to you, and then you go through that list and look at what you can provide for us. That way, you've got our most pressing needs here by consensus, probably half of this, we give that to you. That doesn't mean they'll get it, staff will get the extra, we give that back to you, and then you narrow that down and bring it back to us with what's possible out of the most pressing request by consensus. How's that sound?
My counter to that would be, and this is more in line with what Councilman Allen and Councilman Gay said, I am earnestly working on an organizational restructuring that I think is going to be necessary. And normally, what goes with restructuring is to present how that could impact resources for any given department. Might be a plus one or two here, might be a negative one or two in some other place. But I can only get to that place after I finish my study. One suggestion that I have taken and spent quite a bit of time even this weekend was one that Councilman Clay had suggested to me when I first talked about organizational restructuring. And he suggested, how would that align with your strategic plan? And the strategic plan is something that I had a chance to really study this weekend. And all of a sudden, it kind of clicked to me, this fits with my organizational restructuring thoughts. So I will tell you that when I finished exercise, including working with the department heads, that I believe it is going to align to your strategic plan. But I do need some additional time, and I think an additional quarter, as was suggested by one of you, is probably what I'm thinking in order to do it right. So I don't know that that's different from what you're suggesting, Councilman Karn. How it may be different is in the time that I will, that I will need. And I'd like to be in a stronger position even before you give me a shortened list, because even if it was twenty-five percent of this, first of all, we couldn't necessarily get it to budget balance in a reasonable fashion in a couple of weeks to fit the timetable. So I probably agree, but additional time, another quarter.
Let me, let me make this, let me make a motion, let me make a motion that we accept the budget the way it is, and if there are changes to be made later on, we can always make those adjustments. But I'd like to make that, the motion that we accept the budget as our finance director and our department heads have presented to us.
Are you talking about these changes?
No, none of these changes.
Wait, hold on, first of all, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna take a motion, we need to do that in the regular session, we...
Oh, okay, that's fine.
But we can add that to the, the regular session agenda. But I do wanna be clear about what you're saying, are you, are you incorporating what the recommendations are on this request and including those in the budget, or saying none of these make the cut either, just so an understanding of?
I'm saying we accept the budget as it, as she has presented it initially, and we can take a look at these later on.
Understood, okay, all right.
I would, I would be okay with that, with the caveat of those that city manager said were doable be included in the budget. Anything other than that, then we take, then we take a look at and see what else we could do.
Okay, I have a question.
So, we'll, yes, sir?
We haven't even, the current budget does not even include the salary adjustment, because we haven't approved it yet.
That's right.
It's up for approval at the regular session today, I believe.
Correct.
So how can we even say what the current budget is?
It's cart before the horse, you're right.
It could be entirely different, maybe we don't approve what is recommended. And have you plugged into the budget what is recommended? Because we haven't seen it, because we haven't made a decision on it.
Well, the budget incorporates a salary increase, so it does to some extent for some departments, especially the general fund, there's funding available. As far as what they are recommending, that's funded, based on, because I had a built-in five percent, and that was about close to one point two million, and pretty much that's, that's just for the general fund.
So are you saying you, you took a guess or an estimate of what five, based on five percent? And that's what's plugged into the budget now?
Correct.
Now, the option that is going to be presented in the regular session, does that fit within that five percent?
Yes, it does, for the general fund.
So you can say that regardless of what we approve, well, not regardless, because there are some options in there that might go beyond that five percent, but at least what is recommended for this afternoon, or this evening further on, is covered by the budget?
With the exception of a couple of enterprise funds, the general fund is, but some enterprise funds need additional revenue sources, so in its entirety, no, but just the general fund, yes.
Okay, so...
And the increases for health insurance, that's on this list too, so it's not incorporated into the budget.
Okay, so we don't, even if we take this list away, as of today, we don't have a specific budget without further approvals?
Further approvals for...
An estimated, we're gonna have, we're gonna have public hearings in a short time, right? When we go to the public hearing, we have to have a budget.
Correct.
We have to say, this is what it is, to the penny, kinda thing.
I'll have a resolution, yes.
Okay, so how do we get from where we are today to what you're going to present at the public hearing, what decisions have to be made in order that you can come up with that budget for the first public hearing?
You would have to include the items on this list, specifically those with the healthcare insurance increases and the increases...
I'm sorry, I can't.
You would have to incorporate, you approve this list tonight, especially with those that include the healthcare insurance and some additional costs that the enterprise funds would incur.
So if we, if we simply say, we're going to take your recommendation, which shows up in the request funded general fund column and the request funded other columns, if we just blanket say, yeah, we'll go along with that for now, we'll look at it later, maybe even after the final budget is approved, because there's flexibility in that budget. I know there's flexibility. And then we can make that adjustment later, that's, that would be your recommendation?
Yes.
Just the last column, not both columns, just the last column, correct?
Both columns, the request funded by general fund and the request funded by other funds.
Depends on the, the fine, Councilman Gay.
Yep, those two, yep.
Okay, so we're covered for those columns?
Correct.
And that was my suggestion with, with, that was the caveat to Ken's recommendation. Go with what we have in the big book, in addition to this stuff that the city manager already said that's, that's...
Doable.
Okay.
All right, so we will take up action on this in the regular session, but we'll move on to, thank you, Ms. Florid Bradley.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to a presentation on electrical master metering for apartments by Mr. Richardson. Good evening, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, I wanted to bring up a subject tonight that we have tossed around in the past, but never got any real direction on it, and that is the master metering or electric for apartments instead of individual metering. And I bring this up because we do have a customer that is requesting it to have one meter instead of sixty units. I have put together some pros and cons of this. And we can go with those, I won't go item by item, but there are some pros to this. You think more about it, they probably come up with some more. But the bottom of the list is the pros for our city, less contacts for customer service, bill of payments, inquiries, collections, move-ins, move-outs, disconnects, reconnects. That's less, less contacts there. The owner takes possession of making sure the bill's paid. The owner takes more possession of making sure the apartments are in good shape and energy efficient, and same for the units, and can also give them a chance to maybe offer climate control to conserve more, more power. Convenient for tenants to pay under one bill. And it should reduce our uncollected balances, as you know, apartments have pretty good uncollected balance with the move-in and move-outs. I think that number is, it varies around thirty percent, is some numbers I've heard, and less or no meter tests. So those are some of the pros, some of the cons, of course. If the owner does not pay, then everybody is disconnected, and that's, we've seen that before in the past. That is, that is a very, very bad situation there. I talked to another city that has done this, and their, their problem with it was the change of ownership. When you had a change of ownership between owners, the move-in, move-out of the main, of the main building, so they may have lost some money on that. Tenants cannot receive the senior citizen discount, because they're not individually metered, they're not have an individual account, that is a biggie. They may tend to conserve less energies, like when you check in the hotel and you cut everything on, you don't worry about the cost of the power, you let the owner take care of that. They cannot see their interval data usage, because they don't have a separate meter. A prepaid system, which we're gonna look at in the future, would not be applicable here, because it has to have a meter, our meter in place to connect and reconnect. And of course, the cost for the CT metering is about thirty-five hundred dollars each for us to install, which isn't that bad. In some cases, it may take more than one meter if we have an existing apartment complex that we want to convert to that. I've looked at some of the law, I think Danielle has two about, are we required to have sub-metering? By law, the answer is no. There is no law in the state or in our ordinance I know of that requires sub-metering. It works better if there is sub-metering. We have a master meter and sub-metering for the, for the owner to be able to split the cost up more accurately with sub-metering. In this case, the... In this case, the, the project underway that's asking for this will be putting in sub-metering, but it won't be the conventional type, which is our, our electric meter, it'd be a different type of sub-metering that they can break it down. There is, there is of course a law for water sub-metering that took place back in 2012 that requires that. But as far as electric, I know of none. I'm, I'm good with this going forward, if we want to do this. Now, the question is, for, I'm talking about from new construction, the question is, should we allow it? Can we require it for existing apartments? And if we do, or either one, new or existing, should we have a specific contract, a service agreement? And should the customer pay for the metering costs? A lot of questions here, and I think we should have a security deposit that covers two months maximum for the entire complex. And should we require individual metering? Should we require individual metering like the conventional type with our meters in place? It would be hard to add it later, I tell you that. If, if, if our apartment's under construction and they don't have the meter bases in place, which is the case, it would be hard to add them, it'd probably almost be impossible to add them. And if, existing apartments would be probably a challenge. A good example that would be fairly easy would be the Tavano Harbor. It's one big unit that you can put a master meter there if you wanted to convert to that, if they wanted, or we required it. So I've thrown out all these ideas, so I just want to get some feedback and ideas from you on this. I know we, we discussed it, but never really anywhere, got anywhere with it.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And so do you have any particular recommendations?
I, I think for the new apartment under construction, I'm okay with going with a master meter on that.
All right, thank you, sir. Count, we'll start with questions, Councilman Clay?
One of the biggest problems that we've encountered over the years that I've been on council with significant financial loss to the city has been apartment complexes that did not have any kind of metering for water. And in fact, eventually, you, you got into the situation where the bill didn't get paid. We were hundreds of thousands, literally. In fact, we tore down one apartment complex on Godby Road, I believe, ultimately. The people actually ended up out on the street. It had been an apartment complex and it was turned into condominiums, and, and they lost their life, life savings in that. I mean, it was a real tragedy. Councilman Wyatt could tell you about the sadness going along with that. And it did exactly what this is talking about doing with going to a master meter. People, if it's free, aren't gonna worry about how much electric heating they use in their apartment, which will drive the bill up incredibly. I think we have in place right now a requirement, and I don't know whether we're always enforcing, that new construction of multifamily must have separate water meters. Is that not correct?
I think, I think that's a state law.
Okay. So this would put us in the opposite direction. And one thing I noted in here is, I thought it said that we, we don't have enough meters in one case, maybe it was in your write-up?
It was, the reason they were requiring, requesting this is that their meter-based delivery will not be to this fault, so we'll delay their construction as a, another supply chain issue.
Well, I, I have a, if, if that's the thing that's driving this, because I think, I think this is totally in the wrong direction. I, I couldn't be more against it. I think what we could do for those apartments is do a, wire them in and do some kind of a master meter to the whole complex. And until the meter bases come in, you implement some kind of a program of charging. In other words, you, you do this kind of thing temporarily, but you don't not put the wiring in. You, and, and I would have said, if it were meters, well, you just don't put the meter in the meter base, and, and you just shunt across the meter base.
That's on the meters.
Yeah, but, but since the problem is with meter bases, then okay, put the wiring in and just connect it through, effectively create a shunt. But I, I couldn't be more in disagreement with, with going to anything that takes away from individual responsibility and accountability for the charges there. That's my comment and question.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Councilman Carr?
Well, I guess it's two different things we're looking at. In terms of the new development, I think, I agree with Ambrose, we need to establish both. They need to have individual meter sockets ready to go when the, the meter supply stocks back up. But a master meter there as well, you get, you make, if they're gonna, if you're gonna give them a, a master meter now, they have to have individual meters so they can, so we can go back to individual if need be, and so on and so forth. So they need to have both. The bigger issue in terms of the irresponsibility in our multifamily apartments is more so the owners, I think, than anyone. Now, do we miss out on a lot of money in our multifamily apartments? And I, and I harp on multifamily, not just because my ward has mostly multifamily. I harp on multifamily because this city is 75% multifamily. This entire city's population is 75% rental. So I want us to understand the scope of what we're talking about. Now, I guess it's not news to anybody here that a lot of College Park's apartment communities are a little bit below standards. That's not a newsflash to anyone here, is that right? All right. So we've been working on ways to reform and raise the bar in our multifamily overall. I think that's our biggest Achilles' heel. It affects police, it affects fire, it affects parks and recreation, it affects economic development, the whole nine. Ambrose is right, we can't afford another Yorktown situation. And for those that don't know, the two-sentence quick, Yorktown was a multifamily condominium, apartment-type complex situation. All of the water was on one master meter. But the circumstances were a bit different. The owners of those condos were paying into the HOA association, paying their water bills to them. The association and management was not paying the bills to us, which led to hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of water owed. So we don't ever want that situation to happen again, obviously. In terms of electricity, the change of ownership challenges is the most likely way for something like that to happen. Now, there's one way you can nip the change of ownership challenges in the bud, is if we establish in ordinance is some type of an escrow deposit requirement for apartment complexes to prevent any transition issues. So if an owner is selling, they have escrow money in our possession that buffers us for whatever we make it, a year's worth, whatever that is required, so that if, in the event of a transition, we're, we're covered. Again, I think having both options is something to look at in the future. If we're trying to approve these apartment complexes, I think, you know, and I've got an owner that owns a complex in College Park, I will not call any names, I'll just say it's in the Camp Creek corridor. This is an owner, an owner. This owner also owns an apartment complex in East Point. One complex is on individual meters. The other complex in East Point is on a master meter. Here is the difference for the owners, and here is the difference for the quality of the upkeep of both of those apartments. Now, because the owner, his master meter development, his master meter apartment, it's a different animal. He has residents that are gonna utilize a lot of electricity and air. Because he knows that, and he's responsible for the bills, he obviously subdivides the bills, pro, pro, pr rates them to each individual apartment complex. A one-bedroom is this price for electric, a two-bedroom is that price for electric. Y'all following me so far? That's what he's doing. Now, in terms of quality and upkeep, because he knows he's responsible for those bills, the windows are better insulated, the interiors are better insulated, they're maintained better. Also, where you can't discriminate against who rents, this owner will take entirely, an entirely different perspective in terms of, they would scrutinize potential rental applicants and requirements a little more carefully. Are y'all following me so far? Because now, if you're renting, you're renting and you're adopting the lifestyle of your tenant. In other words, you're responsible for some of their bills. That's gonna make you a more responsible owner, and that apartment complex is gonna be better managed. Now here's the advantage for College Park taxpayers. Right now, because we're not with Georgia Power, someone can rent an apartment in College Park, not pay their electric bill for months on end, leave the city of College Park, we're transient population, and leave us holding the bill, and they can reconnect with Georgia Power virtually all over the state. So it doesn't harm them to leave us holding the bill. And our apartment communities and customer services pull this up for us. The non-payment rate is upwards the, in some apartments, to 38%. In other words, what we bill an apartment in a year, in some of our apartments along Godby Road, 38% of that money, we never get. Some of our best apartments have a payment rate of about 6%. But that year-to-year equals to over $2 million a year in missing money that we would get if it was a master meter where we guaranteed our money with a few policy changes and safeguards in place. So the owners and managers are more careful how they rent. They're more responsible in checking those units to make sure things are there and secure, and they're checking those apartments. I think they make more improvements to the apartments, they improve. And not only do our apartments improve, our bottom line for taxpayers improves, and we get our money that we're billing folks for electric usage from dollar one off the top. We don't have to wait, and the, the issues at customer service are, are huge.
I'm sorry, Councilman Carr, can you please silence your phone or step out?
Customer service, they could give you a little insight on the stress, the conflict, the delays spent in the pursuit of collecting on overdue delinquent accounts, the overall time and staffing required to accommodate most of our customers, and most of our customers are apartment rental customers. So, so there's a lot of staff time, that's a lot of dealing with residents, and those would be happier residents. Now if the residents are happy, and we're getting more money, I think it's something we need to look at. And we're not taking a vote on this tonight, but I think it's something worth talking about. Because if I can make, have happier residents, and we can get more money, anybody that don't like that don't like chicken on Sunday.
Thank you, sir.
So I think it's something that we need to think about, and we need to consider maybe at a later date. But there's another side to everything, and I wanted to give us a, a little bigger picture, because I probably spend more time in our apartment communities than anybody up here, so.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen, what are your thoughts?
I'll try to be, be, be quick. I don't mind the master meters, as long as these apartment owners will come in and replace them with the individual units. I think that a senior person not being able to receive their electric rate discount, I think that, that hurts the, the seniors. I think if all of us up here live in an apartment, and I'm very conservative, because I haven't got much money, and I try to keep my power low and, and turn off lights, and Councilman Clay or Carr says, hey, everybody's paying for mine, so I'll just use a whole bunch. And so we all split it. That, that kind of bothers me as being the, the individual responsible. The other thing is that I think some of these apartment owners will take their own electricity, throw it in to that. I don't, there's a separate way that we can separate those, because they're gonna take their electricity that they use for the, for the laundry and for the lights outside and for anything else that they do, and they're gonna throw that in that bill, and all the apartment owners are, are gonna end up paying for that. So I don't have any problems with electric meters, I think it's great to start with, especially with, with supply chain problem. But I think we ought to set a time limit, that you've got, if you can have an electric meter, a, a master meter, but you have to have the individual meters within a certain amount of time, and if you don't, there's a penalty. And maybe it's $5,000 the next month, maybe it's $10,000 to make these apartment owners go ahead and put it in there, because I believe in individual responsibility. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gay?
I think that you should require individual meters. It's not that I don't trust the residents, I don't trust the homeowners. I don't know if they'll be fair in, in explaining to the other residents, the bill, it gets com, it gets convoluted. If you can put a master meter in there and control it, then I do recommend that if you have the technology to put a master meter in there, at some point, maybe they could see their usage versus, versus the individual usage.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Appreciate your time. We'll move on to the consent agenda, consideration of an action on bids received for versatile flooring at the Gateway Arena. Questions for Ms. Miller, any, do you have any, Councilman Clay?
I've gotten all my answers, and in fact, I have no concerns with any of the four items on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, sir. So I will just skip you for each of these. Councilman Carr, any questions for Ms. Miller on item 3A?
Yeah, okay, so this is, this is the tile carpeting for the arena. So this, this just gives us another floor base to offer different types of...
Now, what it does is keep us from having to take up the basketball floor and lay down, and put down flooring, so we can take this, these tiles and put them on top of the basketball floor, so it saves on your labor and your turnover time.
That's very smart, yeah. And it also, well, I guess we, and we also have a, another surface to offer if there's some, some other kind of situation, right?
If you don't have the floor down.
Right, if someone wants a carpeted event, you, you got carpet.
At a fee, we do.
Right, so, so, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's a double bonus there. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, it makes a lot of sense.
Councilman Allen, any questions?
No, I'm, I'm gonna kinda, I've, I've had a couple of questions, and I've gotten my questions answered, so I don't have any questions on, on any of the four, so.
On any of the four?
No.
Okay, Councilman Gay?
I'm okay, I have a question about the $90,000 block grant.
Okay, we'll, we'll get there in one moment.
Mercedes, I?
We'll get there one.
We're going down each one.
Yes, we are.
Oh.
So do you have any questions for Ms. Miller?
No.
Okay, so do, your only question is on 3D, correct?
Correct.
All right. And Councilman Allen, you have no questions on any of them, Councilman Clay has no questions on any of them. Councilman Carr, do you have any questions on item 3B?
I have one other question on this one, Mercedes, the floor tiles. I'm looking at the diagram here, I see, I see a red color and I see a, looks like a gray color. And it's important to me, I, I, what, what color would we get, is that, is that tile reversible, where it's red on one side and gray on the other?
We're not going red.
Okay, we're not going, so a neutral or gray, that way? Okay, that makes sense, that'd be acceptable to everyone that way. So is it, what's on the flip side of this, this, this carpet tile? Is it just rubber matting on the flip side, or?
I do not know.
That, that's a question I'd like to find out. If it's dual-sided, in other words...
I doubt it, because it has to, it has to stick to that.
I see purchasing coming, he's, he's, he'll give me a, give, give us a guess here, I'm just curious about that.
On the base of those is probably a rubber mat, so it doesn't slip and slide as they lay them down. But it will be gray, that was a color selected.
Gray's a good go-to color, that's, that's neutral in that, yeah, okay. All right, good deal.
Councilman Carr, any questions on item 3B? Councilman Carr, any questions on item three B?
Is it three B?
Yes, sir.
Three B. All right, where are we here?
That's the.
Is this a?
The on ca- on-demand contractu- contractual service for, for water, sewer, and stormwater.
Yeah, this is, uh, Jewel, South, and Kimmy, right?
Correct.
Okay, normally we had just one on-demand service over the years.
You've always had two.
We've always had a backup?
We've always had two.
I always had two.
It's just that, this is a substitute for one of the two.
Okay.
But this is, they're, they're changing them, they're, they're changing the vendor on one of the two.
Okay, it looks like we're, but we're authorizing two still?
Yes, that's correct, council.
Okay, so we're keep- keeping Kimmy in, in the Jewel of the South, this is a new one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I follow. So, how do you choose, you know, something happens? Who do you call first, do you just flip a coin, or?
No, we, we call both, uh, both, uh, on-demand contractors out, and they give us a bid.
And, and, and who's available is the best? Okay, I follow you, okay, got it. All right, okay.
Councilman Carr, any questions on item three C?
Is, uh, so Tim, is this, uh, we, we've had two for years. So this two hundred thousand is about what we've been doing every year for, for both?
Uh, yes, pretty close.
Okay. Okay, so we're about in the same ballpark? All right, okay. All right.
Any questions on three C?
I had a question on two.
I'm sorry, which?
I had a question on two.
Two.
Do we, do we have any selection process on Jewel of the South? Do we go through any selection process to select the on-demand vendors?
Councilman, can you make sure your microphone is close?
On number two, Jewel of the South, I'm not familiar with them. Do we go through a selection process? Who selects the, does it come up here? How does it work?
No, it, it go through a bid. So we had, uh, Jewel Si- Jewel Soft, uh, Kimmy, uh, the Renee Group. And we had one more group I can't.
Is this a recent bid, or, Ms. Bradley? Do you, you sent me, uh, the bid docs on, uh, the Gateway Arena. Did you send the bid docs on the other, on this one? Cause I, you know, I can't vote unless I see docs. You did send it? You did?
Yes, I sent you two. I sent.
I got it.
You got it? Yeah, I see, i- it's on packet page twenty-one, and it's two point three A. You're talking about the water and sewer, right?
No, I sent this separately, as far as, um, are you, which one are you referring to?
I, I have, uh, the, I have the, I have the flooring unsuccessful bidders, but he's, uh, Mr. Uh, Tim is saying that we did a bid process for these on-call. I'm just simply asking, did you submit, had, did you have an opportunity to submit the bid docs?
It's in the packet. You can give it to him.
Packet page twenty-one?
Yeah, I sent you that, uh, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday, I'll double check, but that was sent out to.
Thank you.
Any other questions on, on three B?
Okay, wait, I, I see two point four. Is that ne- that's next?
You're using, Mayor, you're using A, B, C, and D, and the work session is one, two, three, and four.
I'm looking at the agenda for the workshop session. So, item three C is consideration of an action on bids received to perform street resurfacing work on Rugby Circle, South Port Road, and Lafayette Lane under the Georgia Department of Transportation twenty-twenty-four Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program.
Okay, Mayor, that is item two point four on the workshop agenda packet here, if I'm looking at this right. Okay, that's what I'm looking at, and that's what's in our packet here.
Whether it's A, B, C, D, or one, two, three, four, guys.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I, I'm trying to keep up where we are here. I'm looking at item two point four. Is that right, somebody, city clerk?
It's also three C and four C, but whatever the number is, we're looking at the consideration of an action on bids received to perform street resurfacing work on Rugby Circle, South Port Road, and Lafayette Lane under the L-MIC program. Questions?
I got it, all right. Okay.
Any questions on this item?
So we only had one bidder for all of this work? Okay, Tim, if, if I'm looking at this right?
That is correct, only one, and that was actually the, uh, rebid for this project.
What do you mean a rebid?
I put it out, it closed in Feb- I'm sorry, in March. No one bid on it in March, ordered T-Splos, and I put both back out same day, and only received the one bid that's, um, in your packet.
Okay, that, that, that's, that's kinda one thing that worries me in a sense. I mean, we put it out twice, and we only got the same bidder back twice, is that right, only one person?
Got zero bids on the first one.
Zero on the first one, okay. And, city manager, I don't know, but I mean, wh- what does that tell us, I guess, in a sense? Uh, um, you know, I see road resurfacing going on in all the cities, obviously it's happening. Um, you know, I don't know if we're casting in our wet, our nets far and wide enough, or, 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 or what, but I would've thought we would get more interest in a job with this kind of a bid amount, six hundred thousand some odd dollars. Uh, I, I would've think a lot of folks would be interested in that, but you're just saying no one's really interested?
I can answer that we sent over a thousand out, and in fact, some even came here and looked at it, decided that they, they didn't have time for it, so this'll be the third full week for some additional paving, which is outside of this. We worked very hard trying to get.
All right, so.
Contractors in.
Not a lot of interest.
Mr. Myers, is this an issue that's unique to College Park?
No, n- no, this is not unique to College Park. I went to the, uh, T-Splos meeting, Fulton County T-Splos meeting, with all the other municipalities within our jurisdiction, and they all are having problems. Number one, concrete. Number two, concrete. Number three, asphalt. There, it's a supply chain, and number four, labor. Labor.
Okay, so, so we got outfits that maybe would wanna do the work, but they can't get the materials because of the supply chain issues, obviously, and labor issues, same issues with our restaurants, we can't find laborers that wanna do the work. Okay, that explains it, all right.
Any other questions on this issue?
Do, do we, do we, uh, do we start on these all together, or is it going in that order, one, two, three, in sequence, or?
It wa- it's scheduled, wha- whatever we tell them to do first.
Okay, so what are we telling them to do first? That's, I guess that's the question.
Why does it matter?
Well, I'm just curious. All right, I don't wanna, when, when they, if they run out of asphalt, I guess.
We just have to, we're gonna have to, uh, wait to the, we talk to the company and have them come in, and then we'll schedule, and not necessarily one, two, three, we'll just do, you know, the best we can later on.
All right, okay.
Moving on to the last item on the consent agenda, it is, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, it is consideration of an action on approval of a community development block grant fund for ninety thousand dollars for the, uh, Recreation Center roof. And, questions on this item? Councilman Gay, I know you had one?
I think it was answered, I was not looking at. I was not looking at the workshop agenda, so I think it's, the question was, was it the only bidder? I'll see that in my packet, right?
Well, this is not.
It's not, it's just to allocate the money.
It's just reallocating the funds, yes.
And is that the twenty-twenty-two allocation from CUBG?
Correct, it was twenty-twenty-two that was originally going to be for the concrete pad at Zup Park, but the park is in a flood zone, so Fulton County doesn't typically move forward with those because it takes a longer period for advertising, and a lot of more hoops that we had to jump through, so they just asked, we had another project that we could submit, and then Alfia and I had spoken and said we could just swap the funds. What was originally set for the Wyatt would go to the concrete pad, and the, the, um, funds for the ninety thousand for would go towards, that was for the concrete pad, would go to the Wyatt.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Michelle, um, all right, so so the ninety thousand for the pad at Zup, it didn't qualify for the grant because it was in a flood plain. So we spent that ninety thousand dollars out of pocket. Now we're taking this grant and transferring it over to another rec project, is that pretty much it?
It's not a grant project, it was a, it will be, it will be reallocated for a grant project, correct, and is completed, correct.
Got it. When does this, when do we start on the roof?
The roof is completed.
Oh, okay.
So all we're doing is transferring the funds.
All right, so we're just moving the money?
Correct.
All right.
All righty. We will take a five-minute break before we begin the regular session, so we will reconvene at seven. Actually, why don't we just do seven forty-five? Because it'll be seven minutes. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the mayor and city council of the city of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. It is seven forty-seven PM and we have a full quorum with council members Clay, Karn, Alan, and Gabe present. So I'm calling the meeting to order at this time. The first item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chaplain Walker will be handling our invocation this evening.
Madam Mayor, City Councilman, ladies and gentlemen, let us pray. Once again, oh Lord, we enter and ask permission to be in your presence and have your influence in and over our hearts and our minds in this meeting. We have expressed our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to be aware of and to uphold the values and the forms of social order in the United States. We now execute our obligation and our honor to acknowledge you and your eternal values and spiritual order that rest behind, in, and through our talks and our actions, to bring together a new workable social order as well as a spiritual order. Your holy values, oh God, are for all people, present or not present, for the whole world, especially for those who desire to experience authentic integrity and ultimate concern for one another, especially in College Park. We confess, oh God, that we can and have been petty and acted out an oath, not necessarily to your standards or the standards of faith, hope, and love. We ask that you spread your wings of mindfulness, duty, and courage as we proceed with this city council meeting. We pause to give thanks, oh God, for our mayor and city council members and all of those who serve the city to assist in making College Park a part of a more perfect union. We acknowledge that it is our duty to review our laws and forms of personal and collective expressions of life. If our forms of life, liberty, and the pursuit of justice are lacking, in your name, help us to work through, define new forms to express social order and social concern for one another. As we proceed, assist us to be honest, insightful, courageous, and compassionate in our deliberations, in the name of faith, hope, and love. Amen.
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 Additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to change eight C to eight A and move eight A and B, just back one. So.
All right.
However you want to call that, let's put eight C in front of eight A.
All right. And so eight A, the previous eight A would be moved to eight B and eight B would be moved to eight C?
Yes.
And I believe we also have an addition for consideration of staff recommendations to budget. Mr. City Manager, where would you like to place that?
Mayor, I'm okay with it coming at the end.
All right. One more moment here. Any other additions, deletions, or amendments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Next item is approval of the regular session minutes from April seventeenth. And I know I've got one, one change on there, but does anyone else have any others?
Well, we, we got an update today.
We sure did.
With a number of changes that take care of my concerns.
Okay. Any others?
I saw one correction that took care of mine.
All right. So I, it is in the line twelve hundreds and I can't find.
Twelve hundred?
Yeah. It's, it's in the twelve hundreds. Give me one moment here. Apologize, I had it highlighted. It was a reference that Mr. Myers made to finding the flint. And.
In the regular minutes?
I believe so.
There is no.
Oh, fi- fi- it says.
Ten seventy-nine is the.
Instead of finding the flint.
Yes. What line is that?
That's line twelve seventeen.
Okay.
It says fighting the flight. It should be fighting, finding the flint. Is that right?
That is correct.
Twelve seventeen, twelve eighty.
Yes. Lines twelve seventeen, twelve eighty. And that was the only thing that, that I saw. So is there a motion with those changes?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Moving on to item three B, the workshop session minutes from April seventeenth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous as well. We are moving on to some rather, rather voluminous proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements. We are presenting proclamations for College Park Recreation Youth Boys Ten and Under State Champions, the Adult Men's League Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Championship. We are doing a proclamation designating the month of May as Older Americans Month. We are also doing a proclamation designating April twentieth to May sixth as Municipal Clerks Week and presenting a proclamation designating May seventh through the thirteenth as National Drinking Water Week. We are introducing new employees. We are presenting the City All-Star of the Month. I think we have an additional proclamation as well to commemorate a landmark birthday. So let's head on down. If you are here and you are part of the state youth ten and under boys team, please come on up. Oh, you got the trophy too. All right. And while they are greeting council, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Basketball season ran from December twenty twenty-two to March twenty twenty-three, servicing over three hundred youth during the season. And whereas on March third and fourth, twenty twenty-three, the girls and boys basketball teams participated in the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Youth Basketball Tournaments across the state of Georgia. And whereas the city of College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Department had a total of six teams to compete in the GRPA State Youth Basketball Tournaments. And whereas the College Park Recreation Youth Basketball Program won state youth championships in the ten and under major boys. Players, Carson Baker. Carson? Yeah? All right. We need, we need you there for the picture. So just, you know, go ahead, stay right there. Jules Butler. Make sure they know who you are. Make sure you wave. All right. Desiah Ford. Shane Gordon Jr. Xavier Suprant. Trenton Meredith the second. Chase Mills. Carter Pulli. I'm guessing you're the center, right? Yeah. Christian Van Dorn. And Keon Ward. The team was coached by Emmanuel Rainey Jr. And Shane Gordon Sr. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of College Park that the College Park Youth Basketball Program is recognized for their hard work, dedication, and accomplishments as GRPA State Champions for the state of Georgia. Proclaim this first day of May, twenty twenty-three. Parents, parents, if y'all want to come up and get a picture, come on up.
Smile like you won a state championship.
No matter the age, we are winners. We've got, we've got ten U and we've got thirty-five and up. They might be a little more seasoned, but they're still young at heart. So if you are on that team, please come on down. Whereas the College Park Thirty-five and Up Men's Basketball Team competed in the GRPA Men's Thirty-five and Up State Basketball Tournament on March seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at the Wayman and Bessie Brady Recreation Center. We had home court advantage. Whereas the Thirty-five and Up Team went undefeated with a two-and-o record in the tournament. And whereas the Thirty-five and Up Team won the GRPA Thirty-five and Up State Basketball Tournament. And whereas the Thirty-five and Up Team consisted of Derek Allen. Lamar Farr. Dominique Johnson. Brian Kelly. The best kickball coach around, Bo McMillan. Jason Patterson. Antonio Rogers. And Ray Young. And whereas the players were coached by College Park Recreation Leader Ronald Kilpatrick. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of College Park that the College Park Thirty-five and Up Men's Basketball Team is recognized for their hard work, dedication, and accomplishments during the competitive twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season. Proclaim this first day of May, twenty twenty-three. Are there any parents who want to come down? Despite the fact she looks like she's about fifteen. Oh, okay. All right. You're not the only one taking this proclamation. Okay. So if you are here for Older Americans Month, come on down.
Here I am.
Oh, okay. All right. Come on.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Whereas the city of College Park includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to their community. And whereas the city of College Park recognizes the need to create a community that offers services and resources older adults need to make informed choices about how they age. And whereas the city of College Park will work to build an even better community for its older residents by not limiting or thinking about aging and exploring and combating stereotypes. Whereas the city of College Park will emphasize the many positive aspects of aging and inspire older adults to push past, push past traditional boundaries. And whereas the city of College Park will embrace its community's diversity and urge every resident to celebrate its older citizens while helping to create an inclusive society that accepts the mandate to encourage flexible thinking around aging. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of College Park, we do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-three to be Older Americans Month. Proclaim this first day of May, twenty twenty-three. We are also in the midst of Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest amongst public servants. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration and the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, local, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of College Park, Georgia do hereby recognize the week of April thirtieth to May sixth, 2023 as Municipal Clerks Week. Be it further proclaimed that the city of College Park extends appreciation to our municipal city clerk, Chevila Ames. Deputy City Clerk, Queenie Brown. And to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their dedication to the communities they represent. Proclaim this first day of May, 2023. God bless y'all, have a good night. Is there one thing we can all unite behind? Drinking water. For more, where, Mr. Lewis, do you want to bring your team up? Alright, for clean water, yes. Whereas for more than forty years, the American Water Works Association and its members have used Drinking Water Week as a unique opportunity for both water professionals and the communities they serve to recognize the vital role water plays in our daily lives. And whereas so vital that tap water delivers public health and protection and is a source for fire protection, health, hydration, and hygiene. And whereas water supports our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas we are all stewards of water's infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas we recognize the hard work performed by the city of College Park's Public Works Water and Sewer Division, who ensure the safety and quality of our drinking water in addition to maintaining and operating our water distribution system to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to the consumers' homes. And whereas we call upon our neighbors of College Park to recognize the dedication of our water professionals to deliver clean drinking water, to protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and to get involved. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of College Park, Georgia do hereby recognize the week of May seventh through May thirteenth, 2023 as National Drinking Water Week. Proclaim this first day of May, 2023.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am here to present the new employees that were hired in the month of April, 2023. If you are a new employee hired in the month of April, would you please come forward, state your name, your position, and your department? All new employees hired in the month of April.
Hey, everybody, how you doing tonight? I'm Brandon Oliver, I'm Miami, Florida, and I'm with, I'm with the city of College Park. On police, the police department. Hired April tenth, and I just moved up here from Miami, Florida, August fifteenth.
I am also here to present the All-Star of the Month for April, 2023. During the city water crisis in December of twenty-two, this employee was instrumental in leading a team or a crew that worked more than eighteen hours daily to ensure the citizens' needs were met. With this employee's leadership, the crew spent countless hours repairing water main breaks, busted meters, and service line leaks. In addition, this employee assisted with turning off meters citywide to vacant homes to prevent pipes from bursting. This employee assisted with unloading several eighteen-wheeler trucks of drinking water delivered to the city for citizens. Furthermore, this employee assisted with water delivery to citizens who could not make it to the water distribution location. This employee's leadership and dedication are unmatched. The All-Star of the Month for April, 2023 is Mr. Dante Huffman, Operator Two, Water and Street Division of Public Works.
So I think we've got recognition of Mr. Willis, because he's got, he's received some special recognition from the state, and we're getting some photos of that. Alright, so we have proclamation from the Secretary of State. I, Brad Raffensperger, Secretary of State of the state of Georgia, do hereby proclaim Rex Willis and Mrs. Willis has the same, Ms. Sabrina Willis, as an outstanding Georgia citizen. May this outstanding citizen be afforded every courtesy as a goodwill ambassador from Georgia in his travels to other states, to nations beyond the borders of the United States of America, or wherever he may hereafter travel or reside. Thank you for your service to our state. And we also have a resolution from the Georgia House of Representatives recognizing April twenty-ninth, 2023 as Rex and Sabrina Willis Community Champions Day. Whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis are an exceptional power couple who have dedicated their lives to transforming their community through service, building champions, and nurturing children through the Favor House, Georgia Favor, and College Park Favor Track and Field Programs. Whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis have shown an unwavering commitment to improving the lives of families and children in Georgia through the establishment of Favor House, a nonprofit community resource and development organization that uplifts communities' education, wellness, mental, nutrition, housing, and other community programs, garnering numerous recognitions for their outstanding work with youth, families, and the community. And whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis have been instrumental in spearheading several community projects, including partnering with the city of College Park, Kaboom, Forester, Target, and Alpha Kappa Alpha to build three playgrounds within eighteen months in the city of College Park in 2016 through 2018. And whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis have led one of the most successful AAU track and field programs in the country, Georgia Favor Track Club, with hundreds of youth receiving full scholarships, jobs, and skills to become productive citizens. And whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis further launched the It Takes a Village Food Distribution Center to serve the southern region and distribute food, resources, and programs in partnership with the Legacy of Glory, United Way, and Atlanta Community Food Bank. And whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis are profound community leaders who demonstrate unique abilities to effectively mobilize community collaborations and volunteers to transform communities. And whereas Rex and Sabrina Willis's contributions have been an inspiration to all, and their dedication and commitment to community service is deserving of recognition. Now therefore be it resolved that April twenty-ninth, 2023 is recognized as Rex and Sabrina Willis Community Champions Day, and that all cities are encouraged to recognize and celebrate their tireless efforts and contributions, as well as wish them continued success in their future endeavors. So resolve this twenty-first day of April, 2023 by Representative Kim Schofield. And this might be a little bit premature, but we want to make sure that Mr. Bond has an opportunity to live his life beyond taking photographs tonight. So we're going to ask the folks from Clean Spark to come down and get a photo as well. We'll do that at this point. You know, they've got something on the agenda, but they're giving us money. And so... I, I, I am being a little bit premature with this, but we can get all the photos out of the way at the first time, the same time. I think that is, that's all the proclamations and resolutions and plaques. Yes, we're all, so citizens' remarks, there we go.
Good evening, and my name is Jamelle McKenzie, and I just want to say good evening again to our mayor and our council. It has been an amazing year thus far for the Ignite Resource Center. We're getting ready to do an event, but before I talk about the lollipops and Legos, I, a year ago, I was selected among fifteen leaders across the United States by Chick-fil-A, the organization, to serve in their Impact Accelerator cohort. This was a ten-month training program, and we had, oh my gosh, it was so amazing, so many different, different leaders that we came in contact with. All of this was designed to help us for persons that want to make transformation in their communities. I graduated from the program on last Wednesday, and we were given a $10,000 check for Ignite Resource Center. So we're excited about that. And we're gonna spend it all on College Park people. So that was really exciting. During the program, we actually received approximately $15,000 from Chick-fil-A, and the last day of the graduation, we were able to pitch our organization to several, to over a hundred companies that will be contacting us about funding our projects in the future. So the future looks bright for Ignite Resource Center. Also want to talk tonight about Lollipops and Legos. Lollipops and Legos is an event that we will be hosting at Barrett Park on the Saturday before Mother's Day, which is May thirteenth. It's gonna happen from eleven to one. We will be giving Legos, nice-sized boxes of Legos. You can build a whole Lego city with the Legos to our children. There will be a Lego building contest. We have a WNBA player who's going to do a special sports clinic. There'll be creative arts. The Main Street Merchants Association is partnering with us along with Sovereign Ecosystem Solutions, Emergent, College Park Police Tax Plus, and Sports International. We're looking forward to having a great time, and every mom that comes, we have a special gift for the mom. So it's gonna be a fun day with outdoor games at Barrett Park, and I do have flyers. We've, this event, we sold out in the first three days of putting this event on Eventbrite. So today I had to open up a hundred and fifty more spots for the community. So anybody that's watching by video or TV right now, we did just open up a hundred and fifty more spaces. Looking forward to a great day. It is an honor and it is a privilege to serve the city of College Park. Thank you for your time.
What was the date again?
The name of this?
The date.
The date is May thirteenth.
Thank you.
Alright, hope to see you all there.
And Ms. Ames, next.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Larry Brady Evans, I reside at twenty-one twelve Nell. We render our time to our chairman of our committee, Ms. Abdullah, Preserving the College Park Heritage.
So they get twelve minutes total based on assignment.
CP, are you with me? And that don't mean church people. That mean College Park.
Ms. Abdullah, could you make sure the microphone is, is pulled close? Thank you.
Okay, that's better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mayor Motley Broome, fellow council members, thank you for allowing us to address you this evening. My name is Gloria Robinson Abdullah, and we are FOUR. FOUR is the Committee for Preserving the Heritage of Original African-Americans of College Park, Georgia. We are accompanied this evening by our community people, our citizens, including the Price family with us today. We all share the same interest. Give a little short history here. Circa around eighteen nineties, the African-American community was situated one square mile west of Main Street. In the latter seventies through the latter eighties, the citizens of this community were uprooted and displaced due to their properties being purchased by Atlanta Hartford Airport. The only remnants of this once thriving community are Price's barber shop, the house adjacent to it, Buster's store, Brady Gym, along with its historical battlefield, three churches, cemetery, and a few residential homes. The committee's objective is for historical markers to be placed, excuse me, to be placed where the schools, businesses, and churches once stood. Our ultimate directive is for Price's barber shop and the house adjacent to it to be sanctioned as a historical landmark for the purpose of a museum depicting the lives and histories of indigenous African-American families that inhabited the area which is now known as Sis West. Mr. Price set up shop around nineteen fifty-seven in that building. Prior to that, the building was occupied by other businesses. The historic significance of that building is synonymous with other historical buildings in College Park, such as the Women's Club, or the Feed Store, or the in College Parks, such as the Women's Club, or the Feed Store, or the Palmer House, which is located on Hemp Hill. Mayor, council members, it would be a shame to sell, to destroy such a notable part of our history and College Park's history. Yes, the building needs TLC, but both buildings can be restored to their original glory and become the museum that this city would be proud of. We ask that this council includes Price Barber Shop and the adjacent house and the overall Sis West planning for the purpose of being a museum. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all of you being here. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Just to confirm, Rachel Dowdell and James and Cynthia High Tower, you were with Edgar. Okay, thank you. The next person I have is Michael Moore, 2320 Rugby Avenue, to discuss Fulton County and micro life housing.
He's coming.
A pleasure to be in front of you tonight. I'm at 2023 Rugby, and it's a celebration for me tonight. I've spent one year now in College Park as a new resident. I love it here. So I come tonight to speak about the fact that we now have the Fulton County, last year, I believe in April, allocated a million dollars for a micro living or affordable living or a different kind of housing to be offered to South Fulton County and South Metro, and we are one of the cities identified. And to date, I've really not seen anything to speak of come from that, and I've even inquired back to Chairman Pitt's office. So I'd again like to ask the council to begin to proceed at trying to find out how we might acquire that one million dollars of allocation for trying some different type of housing in our community since always. Housing an issue if we want to grow, and housing is an issue if we wish to continue to grow and attract the right type of citizens to our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next I have Tracy Wyatt, P.O. Box 166, 16612, to discuss zoning and council.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to talk a little bit about a rezoning that was scheduled, I think maybe four weeks ago, over in the property right next to mines over on Washington and Temple. And first thing is the signs that was put up are very large signs. So after about a month and a half, the signs have completely collapsed, and nobody can read them. And so I was talking to, so I suggest that next time they maybe put two states instead of one, because the signs are completely collapsed. And so me and some neighbors went by there, and I happened to just open one up, and guess what I found? That the dates has been changed on them, and that there's another hearing next Monday on the 8th. But, so we're kind of confused a little bit. Number one is, we got sign posted that can't be read, and number two, the dates have been changed to a further date. Now, that same company came up before council last council meeting and said that they didn't get the height requirement, that the project was dead. So I'm not sure if it just has to be hurried because it was published, or they going forward. So either they lied to the council, or we're just doing it because we have to because it was posted. So I'd just like, first of all, make sure that we can put signs up that people can read, number one. And number two, I want you to know as well, not this process going forward, if I need to come up next Monday, I will, because they made it clear to this body that if you didn't prove the height commitment, that project was dead. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have no other comments.
Any email? If anyone else wishes to speak at this time, they can come forward.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'll come here before you all. I have a lot of, said thanks to a lot of people, so I got to be quick. I want to thank Councilman Clay, thanks for coming out and your kind words. Thank you, Councilman Allen for coming out, really appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman Caron for reading the proclamation, thank you so much. Thank you, Chief Wade Elmore. Thank you, Michelle Johnson, Colin Block, Ronnie White with the Police Department, and so many others. We really appreciate the support. What we had at Legacy of Glory this past weekend is our grand opening for our food bank that we're going to have every two weeks up at Legacy of Glory at 3557. All is welcome, it's just not about the needy, which we want to take care of the needy, but it's a help up and a help out, so it's not a handout. So anyone who would love to come by, we will have more information first of the month, I meant first of next week. The only reason we're not doing this weekend, we'll be going to Augusta for the GRAP State Track Meet. So after that, we will be doing it. I want to thank Pastor Adrian Leonard, Joseph Leonard, and Apostle Darren for their support for the joint venture at the Legacy of Glory, where we will be hosting our food program. And thank you, Mayor, for reading the proclamation. It was a little long, so I'm glad you read it. You very quick in reading, so thank you. But I want to say something that's very important. Sabrina and I have been in this community forty-four years. Thank goodness, things are starting to go in a different direction, a positive way, which we're very thankful. Sabrina has received Assistant of the Year from College Park, Nonprofit of the Year, and to receive Outstanding Citizen, that's really, I think, awesome and very appreciated, and we thank God for it. Without God, we would not be standing here. So, thank you. But the most important thing, we're about helping citizens, bringing positive recognition to the city, what we have definitely done and willing to continue doing. We support the Police Department, we support the Fire Department, every department here. Over twenty, right at twenty years ago, I helped fault and push forward diversity, which wasn't very much diversity back twenty, just twenty years ago. The city manager would not be sitting there. Lot of you all that are sitting in the seats would not be sitting there if it wasn't for Councilman Tracy White at that time, then Joe Carnes and Chuck Phillips. They really made a difference in department heads and changing diversity of the city. So we have a lot of people to be thankful for and appreciative. So I think it's very important for us to come together, and I look forward to Mayor, Council, everyone having a good, positive, going-forward relationship, at least up here on Council. I hear a lot of people saying, oh, there's too much going on, too much back and forth. Well, I want to see more positive and people getting along. And I know Ambrose is going to be out here in a few months, and he's going to say, woo, thank you, Lord. So, so, but I know many more coming. I want to say congratulations to Jamel McKenzie, who's doing a great job with Ignite and with her graduation from Chick-fil-A. So Jamel, congratulations. Congratulations to the basketball team winning state championship. College Park got it going on, guys. I want you to know. I travel and go to many states, but College Park got it going on. So more people got to stand up, be accountable, be appreciative, and thankful what College Park is doing. But thank you very much.
Okay. Let me say a couple of words.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. Even this weekend, I was, we had to work really, really hard to restore that building. And to see all the good things last week with all the energy, the things going on with the cultural arts, and there were just so many good things to do Sunday with the Spender District. And that's what community is about. And then, you know, we're trying, like I said, doing the food bank. And I'm just happy. I just want you all to know that I'm very, very happy, I'm very, very thankful. And I just want everything to just continue. And, you know, we just keep working together, because together, you know, we stand, divided we fall. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor for approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
All those, are you in favor, Councilman Carr?
Yes.
Councilman Gay, what is your vote?
What was the motion?
To approve the consent agenda.
I approve.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. We'll move on to Item 8A, which is consideration of an action on a request on the acceptance of funds from Clean Spark for the Godbe Road Walking Trail. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 8...
Thank you. We're all doing it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 8B is consideration of an action on a request from Power Director Hugh Richardson for approval of his recommendation on the disbursement of the Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia 2022 year end settlement refund. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 8C is consideration of an action on approval of a citywide salary adjustment for all full-time employees.
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Gay. Is there a second?
We've got discussion.
Is there a second, though?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. And discussion, we'll let Dr. Baker go right ahead. If you had an introduction?
As you all are aware, we conducted a salary study with Evergreen Solutions back in December of 2022, and they are recommending, with staff supporting that, of a move-to-market tenure approach. And with this approach, it will address our compression issue, putting most of our employees to their midpoint and based on tenure.
Thank you, sir. Questions? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I looked at several plans, and this seems to be one of, one or two that could possibly have been worked. It fits within the budget, and I defer to your expertise, so I'm good with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Carr?
I'm glad to see we finally got it up here. Where's, where's, is Evergreen here?
No, Evergreen is not present tonight.
Okay, well, and I asked you to print me out. I guess you printed me out most of this.
I sent it to you electronically.
Right, I did print it out. But I've got a lot of questions in terms of how this works exactly. And if I'm looking at this right, I guess the hybrid salary, is that where it's going to go? Or is that, what does that column exactly mean?
The hybrid salary is, is to place newly pay grades based on your title and your time in the position, or time with the organization, rather, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so these are hypothetical salaries, or are these actual?
Those are accurate salaries based on our current workforce.
Okay. The adjustment percentage, I see, the annual cost, is that the increase column of the actual dollars that this salary line would increase by?
What was that question again, sir?
Okay, I see the hybrid salary column, which has the column. Okay, I'll give you, I'll just, let's look at one here. This one says $65,539. Then the annual cost, $7,404.
Okay.
Hybrid year percentage adjustment, 12.7%.
That would be, that would be for the hybrid model. So the base salary, but $60,000, I think, based on what you're sharing, it's recommended a $7,000, a $7,000 increase, and that percentage would be the percentage based on that salary. But that's not the model that we're recommending.
That's not, which is, which one is this? Is this tier two or tier one, or what, which one is this?
We are recommending the move to midpoint, move to the market, I'm sorry. Which is the three-tier approach. And basically, that addresses our compression issue, as I stated before, but it also recognizes employees who have long tenure with the organization, but also move our employees to the market up the midpoint.
So this hybrid salary model is another tier.
That is another tier. Or another approach.
I have options right there. Okay, I guess what I'm asking is, you're recommending the tier three. And I know we had the tier one, and I guess tier one and two, or the other ones is, or...
That's just what they called it, sir, tier three. It's moving those employees to the midpoint, which is based on the comp ratio, which is usually 100%, and bringing them to the midpoint based on their tier. They just call it move to midpoint, move to market tier three.
Okay, the only issue I had with this model, just looking at these numbers, one of the things I was hoping for is where our lowest-paid staff members got a fair shake.
And absolutely, sir. To address that, if you look at our sanitation department, most of those individuals receive anywhere from a 20% to a 25% increase, or I shouldn't say increase, but it's called a salary adjustment to their current pay.
And I was looking at some of these, and the lower tiers seem to get the smallest percentage increase, whereas the higher tiers in terms of salary have longer tenure and get a higher percentage.
Well, as I stated before, if you look at the sanitation department, for example, if you, if you look at those employees, they are getting anywhere between 20 and 25% salary adjustment. So those tenure, long-term employees will also see a higher increase based on their tenure with the, with the city.
Okay, can you, can you give me, I want to get a real-world example, so I know what the lowest-paid employees are looking at, and I don't know if sanitation is the lowest-paid. I know, I know we have some lower-tier convents.
Well, if you look at, if you look at, we just did an increase for our jailers. If you look at their salary, those salaries are increasing significantly as well.
Okay.
Or I can give you another department. If you look at some of the employees at the GICC, or in our current City Hall building, those salaries are commensurate based on their tenure with the organization and what is market.
Okay. So, again, I want some numbers here. Let's look at some of the lowest salaries. I see hourly's here.
The hourly rate.
Maybe I could do it that way. I see obviously the lowest tier is $15 an hour, I see $1683, whatever have you. So the lowest bottom is 15 an hour, right?
It's 1575.
15, I see a lot of 1575.
Yeah.
Okay. Going by tier three, 1575 an hour goes to what exactly per hour?
I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, sir, but it states it's on the spreadsheet. Looking at the move to market, it will tell you what that salary adjustment would be on an hourly basis.
Okay, and that, that's what I'm...
And it's individualized per employee. So if I've been here for five years, my pay will be higher than someone that's been here for two years.
Exactly. And that's kind of the only thing, obviously, I'm glad to see these salaries increase. The only issue I have with it, and I don't know if there's some adjustment we can make with it, is obviously the lowest-paid individuals are going to have the least amount of tenure because the job wouldn't pay enough for them to want to stay long enough to get in a tier where they get a higher percentage. So it's kind of set up where, again, the lowest-paid workers are going to get the lowest percentage increase, not because of the amount of money, but because obviously, if you're paid a larger salary, you're more inclined to stay at a job longer.
But it's based on your years of service. So if you don't have many years of service, then your salary is not going to be as high as someone who's been here for 10, 15, 20 years.
Obviously, but the percentage increase, that, that was, that was kind of my worry. These lower-tier folks aren't going to stay that long because the salaries were low.
But what would you suggest, Councilman Carr? We conducted the study back in December of 2022, approved by you all, so the salary is sound, in my opinion, so I'm here to just request an approval from the council.
And I'm not necessarily against it. My point is this, I think a lot of stuff, sometimes it's set up in a way where, again, I often say everybody in this city works hard. My point is this, I, I think a lot of stuff, sometimes it's set up in a way where, again, I often say, everybody in this city works hard. And everybody does, you know, the best they can do, so on and so forth. Obviously, some salaries, you got specific skill sets that pay a lot more than others. Specialties, college education, the whole nine, I get that. The lower-tier folks, again, they, they're not gonna stay as long because the, the pay, it's, it's kind of a, 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 a loop. You follow me? They would be here longer where they would actually get a higher percentage, but because the salaries were so low, they're not here as long as higher-paid individuals. So their percentage is not an increase as much as the other ones, not just because they're not gonna, because they are not here long, you know, as long. So I, I just, I just, I, I mean, it's just an inherent, I guess, I would call it a bias in the system or whatever have you. But I'd like to see a higher percentage for our lower-paid individuals. But give me a ballpark. So a fifteen seventy-five per hour, would they go up to eighteen? Would they go up to twenty?
I don't have the report in front of me at this time. It's on the report. It shows you in the move to market column, if somebody's at fifteen seventy-five, what their hourly rate would be.
I mean, we have a sanitation driver that is.
I'm looking for that, I just want to see one.
That is getting nearly a twenty-five percent increase in pay because this person has a certain level of tenure, and it looked at every single individual within our.
Workforce.
In our workforce. Thank you, Dr. Baker. So that move toward middle column, I mean, if you, if you look at that percentage-wise, we've got.
Where, where are we at here? So I can, I see move towards market, three-tier salary.
That's the column that we're recommending.
Those are the columns that, that are, that we're discussing.
Okay, so, so give, give me a, give me a lower-salary employee here, so I can see what we're talking about here. I just want to get a full understanding of this. And I don't see number of years on, on this, this chart here.
You have the full report.
The higher dates are on, in the first column.
Okay, in the first column, I see percentages.
No, your, your, your printout is not, it's not fully encompassed in each page. So because there's multiple columns, you're gonna have to look. I'm looking at it on the computer.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not looking at the full set of columns across the rows.
Correct.
It was a pretty extensive report. It would be a waste of paper to print it out. That's why I emailed it to the council.
Okay, well, can you give me an example of a lower-paid person with few years? What percentage does that look like in terms of an increase? Let's say a sanitation worker that's been here one or two years. What type of a percentage increase would they see, for, for the example, I guess?
It would be anywhere between, probably, on the lower scale, anywhere between probably four and six percent hypothetically, based on your example.
Could you read one of the lower, few, few year, you know, less tenure and just to see where we're at?
I hid those columns because I didn't really, that, that wasn't my focus. But I can unhide the columns. Let me see.
And I was looking for it on here. It's probably here, but if this is separated, I thought these were the full rows. I asked if it'd be printed out, but.
They're all there, you just have to, you would have to line them up, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, okay.
Okay, so sanitation collector one, who's got a little less than five years of service, who's at fifteen seventy-five, is going to go to eighteen forty-six. It's a seventeen point two percent increase.
And that's a five-year employee? You said, or less than five years?
Less than five.
Less than five.
Is it an exact number of years? I thought there was a column of how many years of service.
Four point seven nine.
Okay, so almost five.
That's what I said.
Okay. All right, so a year, are there any new, actual new, new hires, a year, two years, anywhere there that's convenient? And I don't want to, I just want to see, I want to make sure that our lowest-paid individuals and newest individuals are getting a fair shake out of this. Is there a one- or two-year person that you see at all?
Yes.
Okay, what does that one look like?
Councilman, you've got all the information there. We all got it at the same time.
Again, I don't, I don't, these aren't spread across all of the rows. If you have it right there, if you could read it to me, I'd appreciate it. I would assume Dwight had this, so I could take a look at some examples.
I had it in my office. I didn't print the report because it's such a large document.
And again, I have it, but it's separated through the rows.
You just have to scroll all the way across if you have, look at it on the computer.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I had the question about the one- or two-year lowest new tenures, sanitation or convention center or whatever is a lower-tier position, salary.
There will probably be situations or occurrences where you have some new employees that won't receive any increase because they've only been here for a short period of time. And it's based on tenure with the organization. But what we're, what we've tried to do, as it relates to the study, is bring those individuals up to the market. So you have instances where somebody is currently at fifteen seventy-five, they may not get a salary increase, and this is hypothetically speaking. I would say anywhere between sixteen dollars and seventeen dollar increase because of their short tenure with the organization.
So, so those that have been here over a year, they'll get.
They will receive an increase, yes.
They'll get something.
But there was a minimum.
I can, I can take some time with you, Councilman Carr. I don't want to hold up the, the item tonight, but I can, I can schedule some time with you to go over the report in more detail.
And this tier is better than the other options?
It's more budgetary control than some of the other tiers. And with this, with this tier, it allows for more individuals in our workforce to receive some type of salary adjustment. I don't say pay increase, but a salary adjustment based on the market.
Is this the lowest-priced tier, is it one point two?
It was not the lowest price, but it was more feasible as it relates to most of our employees being incentivized or receiving some type of salary adjustment.
It's a compromise.
It is.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the move toward market adjustment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Thank you.
Item nine A is consideration of an action on the contract for probation supervision and rehabilitation services between the City of College Park and Professional Probation Services, Inc.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. Go right ahead.
The only question I have is, will we have an opportunity to assign?
Chief. Councilman Gay has a question. I'm sorry.
Do you know that this is, does she know this is her item? You know this is your item?
Yes.
Is there an opportunity to assign, that may be a question for the judge, actually. Is there an opportunity to assign, assign the probationary to some of the city needs, like litter and, is that opportunity there that you know?
Yes, that, all of that goes through the court. There's just be a conversation. And I know in the past, those on probation, it's their community service that is a part of it.
Well, so then why are we controlling the, why, why don't this go through the court, the fund, the decision?
This is just the continued contract with probation to continue the services that they give. This is no out-of-pocket cost to the city.
No, I agree. No, my question is, why doesn't this contract go through the court? Why are we approving this contract? Why not the municipal court?
Because it's our municipal court, the City of College Park.
Councilman Gay, if I may, so the municipal court doesn't have the authority to contract on behalf of the city. So this is, it's required by the city to be the one to procure those services. So that's why this is coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Here, Chief, okay, so this, this handles probationary services.
Yes.
And this is folks that don't want to bound it over to Fulton County. I know we have a, not a great percentage. And I know the, historically, a lot of people were bound over to Fulton County because they were so backlogged that they knew that, you know, it'd be better than dealing with us directly. The only downside to that is, I guess, for our fines and so on and so forth, that, that goes over to Fulton County as well, or?
No, all of those fines would be through the probation, and whatever fines we get, then we, they provide us with a monthly report of funds, probation fees that have been taken, and whatever percentage that's due back to the city, we're entitled to those.
So this, this doesn't give anyone the option of working it off?
No. No, that, that's totally up to whatever decision the judge renders or the solicitor renders at the time.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item ten A is consideration of an action on a request for a direction regarding Fulton County-sponsored Tiny Homes Project. Good evening, Ms. Rainbow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. As you, as I'm sure you recall, on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the Mayor and City Council meeting, interim City Manager Jackson Myers shared information concerning a potential project with Fulton County to build a community of tiny homes. The proposal was that the city would donate a parcel of land, up to half an acre, to Fulton County. Fulton County would donate a million dollars to fund the project, hire a project manager to oversee the program, and work with a nonprofit developer who has expertise, expertise in affordable housing to build approximately sixty-eight tiny homes. Mr. Myers, at the time, requested approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Fulton County for the donation of the property. Although there was some discussion about the agreement, there wasn't, there was no formal decision. And so if you allow me this evening, I'd like to first share with you my three asks for this evening, and then we can go through them and discuss them one by one. So first, we need consensus from the council as to whether or not you do, in fact, want to go forward with the project. Number two, we need to decide on what piece of property council would like to donate. And number three, we need to decide on, in planning terms, how we want to go about putting down some rules and requirements to get the, the project built. So first, as I said, I would love some direction from council as to whether or not you, in fact, do want to go through with the project. In your packet, I have identified two possible parcels, one located on three six six eight Jefferson Street, and one located on seventeen thirty-nine Princeton Avenue. They are right next to each other. They are both point four three acres. I have included the total appraised value for Fulton County in your packet information, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Clay?
Well, I guess I'd like to address the third question last, and, and that is, and I think I gave you a heads-up on this. I didn't see a response, so I don't know whether you responded or not. I may have missed it. I'll give you what I wrote. Will the homes be sold or rented, question mark? Given an expanded demand for these homes, how will they be allocated to future residents? And, question mark. And as a follow-on to that, who makes the decision?
I did address that question to Fulton County, the representative from Fulton County. The homes will, will be treated like condos, basically, so they will be for sale. His response to me was that they were still working out all the details about how they will be marketed and sold. I believe they are going to try and. Direct them to City of College Park and Fulton County residents, but.
Good evening. Stan Wilson, Community Development Director, Fulton County. Yes, the properties will be sold, and the way that the decision will be made in terms of who, we'll look at it from a lottery standpoint. We were looking at the homes being available for veterans, veteran homeownership. And what was the other question? Who would make the decision?
Yeah, who would make the, I mean, if we're, I think one of the things we're being asked to do is identify property, which is great. And we have plenty of property, as you know. And secondly, to actually contribute that property. In other words, not receive any compensation for it. So certainly, since it's in our city, and since we're giving up a, a piece of property in the city, and since we're not charging for it, or at least that's what's proposed, I would expect that we would have some say in who gets to buy these homes. Because I, as I said in my introduction, I think there's gonna be high demand for these. And so I, I think we have some role to play in to say, who gets them?
Absolutely. Well, part of, part of those dollars, and one of the things that was already mentioned, was MicroLife Institute being a project manager for this. And so they'll be managing the project, but when we get to the part around homeownership, as I mentioned, we talked about veterans. So we'll also be working with the VA and also to, it would be a collaborative process. A big part of doing this project, which is a pilot, is to really look at it and set it up so we can do it again and replicate it. And MicroLife would be a key part of doing that. And also a part of that is community education and community engagement. Because as somebody earlier mentioned, we're talking about different types of housing here.
Right. First of all, I think veterans are a great idea. I toured a tiny home project several years ago, actually, before COVID. And it was in Savannah, and I was very impressed and had a chance to talk to some of the people that were in the homes. And I think it's just a wonderful idea to do that. But I'd like to know how that's gonna be done before I commit to giving up any control over how it's done. So that's, that's, that's my.
Absolutely. And the best answer that I can give for that, that's part of the reason we're talking about including the VA, to be able to find those potential buyers and then using a lottery-type system to do it fairly. And to make sure that it's not just folks being selected, you know, at random.
Well, with these, with the people who can enter the lottery, will they be, for example, veterans that live in College Park now and maybe don't have a home?
Not knowing what those, what those numbers look like, we'll certainly look to do that as we talk to the VA and identify, you know, the particular veterans for that.
Well, I would, I would be, I would feel very disappointed if we had veterans living in College Park and we ended up with no veterans from College Park being selected for these homes.
If we, if we want to prioritize, we can certainly look at it that way. I just want to make sure we're not, we don't do anything to violate anything related to fair housing. That's, that's my only concern. But if we can say prioritize, I think we can try to do that.
Okay, I, I guess I, where I am is I have a diff, I have difficulty voting on it when I don't know what's going to happen. And that's all I had in the way of questions, really.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Councilman Carr?
All right, and thank you for coming out. I specifically asked if someone from Fulton County come out, so it's good to see you. I asked some of the same questions this morning with county management and chairman's office to get an understanding of what we were talking about here. So from the county's perspective, it was my understanding from this morning, and my question was, all right, obviously, we're interested in this. But my question was, I want College Park residents to get the first priority in terms of within the boundaries of fair housing. And I was told that that's not, that, that would not be an issue, that we would get a priority within the boundaries. And obviously, it's only a handful of homes. I think we'll be able to cover that lottery, and I want to make sure that our College Park residents get first option within the fair housing boundaries. And Chairman Pitt said he was fine with that, as long as that's a Fulton County resident. And he said, hey, we're doing it with you all, you all should get the first priority. And I said, that was good enough for me. And I said, that was good enough for me. How we set things up and how you set things up from there on out, we want to be part of it. City Manager is here, and I don't know if you all have met, but he's our point person. And if we're doing eight houses, if we're doing ten houses, I want to see ten College Park residents in there.
I understand.
And I like to see some of them be veterans, if some are schoolteachers or whatever other criteria we can get in, police and fire. Let's start with some of, some of the tiers. So that, that's kind of the direction I understand we're going in. But I want to make sure that we get first option on here since we're donating the land. If they're left over and nobody's interested, then we're going over to, out into the other cities, I'm fine with that, but I want to make sure all of our residents get first options on these houses.
Understood.
And that was my understanding that we could just set it up that way, being the donators of the property, so.
Absolutely. Like I said, we can, we can prioritize and do it within the bounds of fair housing, absolutely.
All right.
And I think that was part of
I asked those specific questions this morning to make sure there was an understanding that this, not exclusively for us, but we got the first deals.
Understood.
All right.
Councilman Allen?
Yeah, I think they have answered, asked a lot of the questions that I had, but I had heard initially, a week or so ago, that these were all going to be for people in Atlanta, Fulton, Fulton County, and not for College Park. And you've addressed that, so I appreciate that. Are they going to be sold? Each one going to be sold, would you say?
Yes, sir. They're being sold for homeownership.
Okay. So you want us to donate the land to you? Are you going to deed those back to us, or are you going to sell them yourself? And you get the money, and then what are you, how's that work?
One of the, one of the biggest challenges with affordable housing is the long-term affordability. So there've been, there've been cases where the way it's typically done, someone could sell a house and that house is no longer affordable. So what we're looking to do is to put that property in a land trust so it can be maintained for affordable for a longer period of time.
Okay. I just, and I also want to make sure that we're following our procedures, that it does go through us, it goes through BIDA and the proper procedures to make sure it's considered like everybody on all the other properties we hold. And I believe that's the, does that have to go through the BIDA like all the other properties? Or how does that work?
Well, since BIDA is the owner of the property, then it would, it would need to go to BIDA after this decision.
Are these two properties owned by BIDA, or are they owned by this?
They're owned by BIDA.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure that we follow the same procedures, okay.
Councilman Gay?
Sir, I just have three questions. Who selected these parcels? Aman's all of our parcels.
It's my understanding that Jackson, with the help of some GIS maps, selected these, Mr. Myers.
And the second question is, since Fulton County has its own land bank, why didn't you consider doing this pilot project with houses in the land bank? This is for, this is for the gentleman from Fulton County. I'm sorry.
We did take a look at other properties as well, but when this was presented, it was presented as an opportunity to work with College Park. But we do have a listing of other properties. I mentioned this is a pilot. So once, once we work through the pilot, we'll be looking at other opportunities to do the same type of development.
I understand. And I get it, and I look forward to an opportunity. I just know that Christopher Norman, my good friend, maintains a land bank with houses that are already yours. So I was just wondering why you're going around that process. And there may be some land in close proximity to College Park.
Yeah, well, I will say that we've had conversations, I've met with Chris, and we've talked about, we've talked about potential opportunities as well.
Okay. And the third question is, will the entire one million dollars from the American Rescue Plan go to this initiative?
Three hundred thousand of that is program management with MicroLife. The remaining, we'll look at putting that back into the project to make sure that we maintain the affordability that we need.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a comment and sort of a question. I was under the impression that one of the advantages of this land was that it was close to MARTA and that that would offer an incentive, an opportunity for people to take MARTA. And it also is close to the Ion project at the Methodist Church where there will be other affordable accommodations. Not, not homeownership maybe, but, but affordable nonetheless. So I, I don't know whether that was your rationale or not, but that's what I was led to believe.
That was Jackson's rationale, and to be honest, when the county approached me about it, I said, obviously, the county gets a lot of federal grants and so on and so forth, and they have an option of placing that anywhere within the fifteen cities. And obviously, we want to have the opportunity to compete for some of those opportunities that the county gets from the federal funds. Obviously, I'm going to root for College Park, getting as many of those as possible, and we've been getting a few, and we appreciate the partnership with Fulton County. A lot of times, the county will ask, we got this money, we want someone to step up to the plate. And when they say someone to step up to the plate, that is remembered. We have seen an increase in CSP grants. We have seen an increase in additional funds for the, when I was Commissioner, for the, the, what's the thing over there? Splash pads, so on and so forth. I think it pays dividends. I had a site in mind, to be honest, that was in my area. But to be honest, Jackson, we had a talk, and he said, "Councilman, I think this site would be even better." And I went over there and I took a look, and I had Jonathan Bettis do the measurement, and it was less than a thousand feet from the MARTA station. And I had to admit, Jackson, that was, that was a much better site than what I had in mind, and
So, sir, you're agreeing with me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It is. It's a good site, either one of those plots, I suppose. So it's not about wards, it's about the best site, and that was the best site that I, that Jackson did find for, so, yeah.
The only question I have, and I don't know, Jackson, you probably could tell, but there's, there's some stormwater creeks that go in and out of those properties back there, and I'm not sure if any of the creeks, that will affect any of those creeks at all.
I can't answer, I, there, I understand you're absolutely right, there are creeks back there. There's a wet, wet stream all the time, but we need to have the layout of the parcel before we can determine that.
Okay.
And how the things are going to be shaped.
I think, just make sure you check in.
Mr. Wilson? Has, has the county budgeted the soft costs for this beyond project management?
That is, that is part of bringing in a developer, but also too, part of that remaining seven hundred thousand, to see where those dollars need to go in order to reduce the cost of the project.
Who can, I'm not sure who could answer this off the top of their head, but in terms of noise contours, where does this, where does this land fall?
I have Ambrose's question.
I will say that environmental will be a requirement that'll have to be done.
Yeah.
My concern would be that we have these homes in, in this area that is
They'll need extra insulation, that's correct.
I'm sorry?
They will need extra insulation for the noise. They are in there. Yes.
And, Mr. Wilson, the county is supportive of that and understanding of that, that we are in a space that is a little bit different than where you might build typical housing.
Yeah, that's a conversation Jackson and I had a few months ago when we talked about development in College Park. So it becomes a matter of what those costs look like. It's not, it's not totally out of the question when you have an area with high noise attenuation that you've got to make modifications, windows, insulation. But that's part of what we'll be looking at in the initial assessment.
Understood. Any other questions?
I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Gay.
I hear transit-oriented a lot, wanting to be near the MARTA station. Let me just remind you all that we have several bus routes that gets our residents to and far from the MARTA station within five, ten minutes. So I would like for future considerations to understand that you don't have to be near the MARTA station to be, for, to be a benefit because we're a small city and we got lots of bus routes.
All right. So is there consensus amongst the body that the desire is to donate a half an acre to this project?
I'd support it.
I'd like to know, I don't know. I'd like to find out a little bit more about the land and the creeks and, you know, they're going to be doing some work on it, but.
Well, there's a, I thought I saw a topo mapping here. Now, this isn't a flood, on the flood plain, is it, Jackson? This corner?
Mayor and Council, this is just to enter into an IGA to put everything that you previously requested into this IGA, so everybody, that's what this is asking for.
Ms. Rambo gave us three questions.
What was the, I didn't hear the other?
Approval of the IGA, approval of a land transfer by BIDA and the revision to the zoning ordinance. So are we just discussing the first issue tonight?
Well, just the first one right now.
Okay. Well, we're not BIDA, so the second one is, is not us. And the revisions to the zoning ordinance, I think that it might be helpful to have guidance to those as opposed to just kind of freewheeling that.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So i- is there consensus to move forward on drafting an IGA?
Is there a motion? Need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion on that because there isn't one in front of us, but is there consensus for staff to move in that direction?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But we need to get some of these details worked up
Right, exactly.
before we actually
Yes.
take the motion to donate the property, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, indeed. So staff has direction to move in, in that direction and, and get the, the details of the IGA hammered out. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I did want to get direction on the zoning amendment also, if that's okay.
Have you presented us with anything?
No, no. Well, well, what I wanted to explain is, as you recall, the last time we did a tiny homes project in the city, we don't, we don't have a tiny homes amendment.
Right.
And so we kind of put a spur peg into a round hole, and we did a rezoning and some variances, and we made it work. That isn't necessarily the best way to go about planning for the city. It would probably be preferable to have a tiny homes ordinance or at least some guidelines for this development, and then you can correct any flaws that you saw with the previous one, and you have some ground rules for any other future developments, and everything will be consistent. So I, my, my ask now, is it the pleasure of the council to go forward with putting together some kind of amendment to the zoning ordinance to put those rules together? And also, keep in mind that these, the parts, the two parcels that we're looking at are currently zoned TOD, Transit Oriented Development. And TOD does not currently allow for this type of development. So we either have to rezon the property, which I really would not want to do, or we have to, again, amend the ordinance to allow for this type of development in TOD.
Ms. Rambo, can you bring us options? Because I don't want to, I don't want us to get mired down in, in the nuts and bolts and we don't have anything to work from.
Sure.
I think that's probably a, maybe get an opportunity to discuss this at a workshop and, and see how we might like to proceed. Does that work with the body?
Well, I, Mayor, I, I think on both of those points, they need to be addressed.
Yes.
Because I, I think we're going to want amendments in both cases. And a good way to do that is for you to bring them and us to review them in workshop.
Yep.
So I think the direction she's looking for is, should I work on those two amendments? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Also, Angela, what you can do, and I saw it in the packet, obviously, we need to have an ordinance for tiny homes. I mean, you don't want to start a situation where tiny homes start popping up all over the place in the city. Now, the city that I was taken to by some of the commissioners that already have an ordinance, where was that? I forget, but they've
Clarkson?
Clarkson.
Clarkson.
Yeah, Clarkson, which is not in Fulton County, but they have an ordinance there. So it might not be, you know, you may not have to reinvent the wheel there if you go over there and get a copy of the ordinance that they have for the tiny home villages that they already have established. And we start there and take a look at what they have. And that may cut your workload in half.
I, I think, Joe, though, that these are to be affordable homes, and that's hard to work. But they can't be, in my opinion, at least to get my vote, they can't be homes that you can't live in peace and quiet. And that means they need to abide by the noise ordinance that requires for all this new development that you, the inside noise should not be above forty-five dB. And we've got that, and I believe, help me out, we do have that in our ordinance now. And depending on what noise contour you're within, if the noise level is eighty-five dB, you know, I don't care what the contour says. If the contour says sixty-five dB, that might be the quote "average", and don't treat that mathematically exactly. But you still might have a plane that will fly over at eighty-five dB, especially in close to the airport. People that are living in these homes, if they're veterans particularly, are going to have issues with PTSD, we do not need every time a plane flies over, a veteran to have bad memories of wartime. Or anybody, for that matter. I mean, it's unhealthy. So we need to make sure the sound transfer coefficient is similar to what we did for the Hawthorne development. And that means that we put a requirement on what the, what the level of the noise inside would be. So you good with that?
I'll make sure that's included.
Okay.
I might add that they, they get those engines, running up those engines too, in afternoons over there where Southwest is and Delta has their hangar, they run those engines up.
Oh, absolutely.
They're fairly close, so we definitely do need to make sure we're doing that.
You, you need a, you need, you're going to need a sound transfer coefficient of probably forty-five dB. And an internal noise level of forty-five dB or less. Period.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Rambo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, next item on the agenda is consideration of an action on a request on direction regarding nineteen eighty-eight and nineteen ninety-six Harvard Avenue price barbershop property status. Good evening, Ms. Alexander. How are you?
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. The item before you concerns the property that I think you had some citizens speaking about earlier this evening. Not sure how much detail you'd like me to go into. The request is very narrow in scope, and that is only to remove the property from market, to not have it for sale. I know there's goals and ambitions and needs for the community to, what to do with that property. All of that would require a specific business plan related to programming rehabilitation and maximizing the visitation, the visitor's site and all of that. So the request is to remove it from the, from being listed for sale for purposes for you all to plan and direct staff how to plan for
Motion.
future use.
Thank you, Councilman Carn. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen.
I already said second.
Motion by Councilman Carn, second by Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye!
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm sorry, clarify motion?
Motion is to remove from the, from, take the property off the market. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an action on staff recommendations regarding budget. We had that conversation during workshop. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Karn, is there a second?
You understand what we, what, what our consensus?
Yes, we are clear.
All right.
Can you repeat the consensus, please, for the record?
The consensus was to adopt the recommendations of staff in regard to the budget amendments presented at workshop.
And then we'll take a look at a later date.
Second.
But I want to add that into the motion.
Hold on, I'm confused.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. All right, Councilman Karn, will you state your motion?
Okay, I, I wanted to modify my motion slightly. We take a look at the recommendations from City Manager in addition to what we have in the big, the big book, but at some other date, we take a look at any other possibilities for, for additional opportunities for funding.
Well, those that
Wait, hold on, hold, hold, hold on, give me one moment, Councilman Gay, I will come to you in just one moment. Madam Clerk, are you clear on that motion?
I am not because what I remember was to adopt the big one, as Councilman Karn stated, but also to adopt the ones that had the
That, that the City Manager already, yes, that's But the, the, the addition was to take a look at any other additional budget opportunities sometime in the near future.
What do you mean by an opportunity?
Well, going by what Stanley said, he said, given some time where he can assess things, there may be a possibility to, to, to allocate for some additional things possibly in the future.
Are you talking about cost savings or additional expenses?
Cost savings and a potent, potential budget amendment down the line, which we're able to do.
Right, right.
So I just want to
But you're talking about, you're talking about either additional revenue or additional savings, not additional expenses.
Right.
Councilman
Well
Councilman, I, I want to
I think, Stanley, do you, you understood what I was, I was trying to, I was trying to
Yes, to be more specific to Councilman Karn's point, I have advised you on several times, I did this evening, that I continue to look at what I believe is low-hanging fruit with organizational restructuring. And so I believe, as was said during the workshop, within the next quarter, I really would like to bring back some of those ideas and specifically I said, and, and these are just rough, but I did indicate that it could be plus and minus positions or other miscellaneous costs that would help us facilitate some ideas that I believe will, will be important, given my additional assessment and time that is needed. But organizational restructuring is specifically what I was contemplating, but it certainly would include potentially other items on the list that could be associated.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest a clarification?
I think you and I may be thinking the same concern because adopting the big budget is not what we can do tonight.
Correct, correct.
We have to have public hearings and so this is, this is really incorporating the recommendations of staff from the workshop session on, on that, on that three-page, into the proposed budget, not adopting the big budget.
So we need to leave it at that? Is that what you're saying?
No, you can't, so I would, I would suggest, so it's a motion to incorporate the City Manager's recommendations into the proposed budget and direct the City Manager to propose a restructuring plan and related budget amendments within the next quarter.
That, that sounds clean.
That sounds great.
Is that your motion, Councilman Karn?
Absolutely.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Hold on, okay, Councilman Karn made the motion, Councilman Gay, you second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. City attorneys report?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
City Managers report?
Just to briefly add on, this is my third meeting since April 3rd, it started, also a City Council meeting, so I'm learning a lot, I'm studying a lot. I won't recite all of the things that have happened in the last two weeks, but I will update you on a couple of book-in items. Late last week, I had the first round of interviews along with a good panel of, of experts. We interviewed for Public Works Director. I anticipate bringing a couple of finalists in at the end of this week. Like to engage some additional staff who will be colleagues to that potential candidate. I've also received the list of chief building official candidates that we also will begin interviewing later this week. There were special events over the weekend that I had a chance to participate in and so had a, had a very good time from Friday night until pretty late yesterday. And I continued my walking tour throughout College Park, so I really am learning a lot. I had a rendezvous, I will call it, with our strategic plan over the weekend along with, of course, other, other documents, but strategic plan, I absolutely fell in love with the work of the staff and the City Council, going back to your update in 2020. Strategic plans are what I consider to be a real expertise that I've acquired over many years in organizations and I think College Park's strategic plan that we certainly periodically will want to update and fine tune and probably have some annual review with the, with the City Council. But from what I have read and studied, I am very excited about it because I think what you have outlined, they are very meaningful things that allow us to build community and build greater community quality, community. My task along with the staff is to make sure that we are taking it seriously and we're staying focused on it. So among the things that I believe that we will be able to tie in, that I will be bringing back to you is not only the organizational restructuring, I really think ideas that I was already gathering really fit with what you have outlined as your long-term vision and then that shorter five-year make-it-happen strategic plan. Low-hanging fruit in order to make sure that we're living what you expect us to, starts is basically as even the agenda items that come before you, we should make it clear before we bring it to you and point it out to you, how does it tie in to the strategic plan? So those are things that we will probably be doing sooner rather than later. As you know, the City Charter requires a monthly report from the City Manager. This brief verbal report won't do the job as far as I'm concerned. And again, I'm giving myself time to, to do it right and to learn and assess as much as I can, but you will be getting regular substantive, understandable reports that come from myself and what I call the Community Building Leadership Team. I'm hoping that that will be at least on a monthly basis per the Charter, but I also see that I may be bringing something to you with each of these meetings and I go written report, ensure that we are not only reporting, but that is in keeping with strategy. So I'll stop there for now, but I am just very excited, the more that I learn, the more invigorated and enthused I am. But College Park, I have begun my love affair. It started sooner than tonight, but it, it certainly continues.
Thank you, sir. Porta Mayor and Council, Councilman Clay?
Yeah, I, I have just a couple of items. The first item is my continued frustration with B&amp;Bs in College Park. And we have one down the street, we, I, I have a number of them around my ward, I know everybody else has them around their ward, but I'm very familiar with the one that's a block and a half from my house. And they continue to, I see it on my walk, every, every Friday or Saturday night when I'm out walking, sure enough, there's a line of cars there. And I know, we know who they are, they know who they are, they acknowledge who they are, and yet we are not able to do anything about it. And I know that we deferred some hearings on it, I believe, for a month. And one of the questions I have is, why do hearings get just deferred for a whole month? And, and it's, this is, I think, is court staff, not, not your area, Tasha, or Michelle. Do we know why we can't have regular hearings and that ties to something in the budget? A City Manager, where there was some discussion presented by our judge that she really didn't have the resources that she needed, that was brought to Council's attention, I think before you were on staff, I'm not sure now, seems like you've been here forever now.
I've seen it, seen corresponded.
And, and we need to get this fixed. It's one thing to not be able to identify or, or get concrete proof that something's being run, but when you've already got it identified and you cannot run it through the court system to address it, there is, that's just not acceptable. So that needs, that needs to be addressed. I think I'll let it go at that. I, I'll turn it over to Councilman Karn.
Councilman Karn?
All right. Great weekend events. Ken and I and the Mayor rode the bikes on Saturday.
Sunday.
Was it Sunday? Sunday? Yeah, it's a little, little rain, but we made it through. We rode the, the amateur trail, I think we all did pretty good. It was a lot of fun. The bike event was great, the event at the church was really great. Thanks to the staff that helped put that together, that was obviously multiple departments. The more things like that that we have in this city, the, the, the better. Chief, I want to make sure, I heard about a few other flare-ups within the Windsor Forest corridor, so we want to make sure we keep the gas on the pedal on the, on the floor with that. It's warming up and obviously, you know, crime trends with the client, with the weather. Still get a lot of complaints about loitering and hanging out in and around the convenience stores, just in general. I know patrols are out there, I don't know what the procedure is for that, but at the end of the day, you know, it's not a hangout. And I know a lot of that loitering are some of the customers of the owners of those stores, but at the same time, I want to make sure we reach some kind of a happy medium where it's not just, just turned into flagrant loitering. So I want us to keep an eye on that. The City Manager, it's good to hear about your plans, it sounds good, that's some of the things we want, restructuring, that's music to my ears. Part of us hiring you was reshuffling the deck, we talked about that through the interviews all the way through, so, yeah. We have long received monthly reports from our department heads, but over the last few years, that's something that we have gotten no more of. And a lot of times, I'm pretty uninformed about what's going on, unless I sit in with all of these department heads regularly, which I do not have the time to do, it's hard to get the information I need in terms of what's going on in general, the projects, upcoming things. Now, Michelle has, has stepped, stepped it up and, and provided some monthly reports and that's good information where I can ask less questions and I'm a little more informed about what's happening, so, but for decades, we had monthly reports from all department heads and it was in a packet. It's a pretty thick packet, I don't need a packet that thick, if it's thin, it's fine, if it just gives an overview of what's going on, what's coming into the pipeline, what was done the last month, so on and so forth. And there was never an issue with getting that and it was good information. So I'd like to see that again. I asked during the budget about Hartsfield-Jackson, I don't remember which department it was, but I guess it was public information or ma- maybe it was DMO, if they were taking ad space for the digital arrival baggage claim jumbotron, I don't know if you remember that or not, but again, every passenger offloading off of a plane goes by that, those advertisements. DMO has an advertising budget that they're not able to spend every year. So obviously if it's a qualified use, that's a no-brainer, when they're required to spend all of their money every year and it's not spent, maybe they need to find some more areas to advertise city of College Park. So I want us to look into that. So hopefully we hear back from, I guess, the DMO on that. I was tuning into the meeting for DMO and the other day and there weren't enough folks on to, to even have a meeting, to have a quorum, and I'm really concerned about that. I wasn't aware, I had assumed that DMO, like all of our other volunteer board appointees, I thought that they got the, the stipend as well, but apparently they're the only board appoint, appointment that does not get the, the small stipend like the Planning Commission and the BCA. Now, I don't know if that has anything to do with not enough folks showing up for, for, to have a meeting or not, I don't think it is, but I, I want to try to make sure we, we try to get our folks in. These meetings, I think, all are very important every year, but in particularly this year, I think it's very important by the, the DMO as well. We got a lot of action going on and we want to make sure our representatives are covering the bases if they can. Again, community partners. This city cannot function the same without community partners and I want to thank all of the partners that have put in work over the years. It is so very important. Government cannot do it alone, I'm gonna repeat that, government cannot do it alone. If you're depending on government to be the cure-all and the fix-all, you're gonna be disappointed. It takes community partners, it takes the churches, it takes other outfits. And when you ask yourself the question, who shows up to do the community work? And that's a group of people persistently. Who shows up to fill in that gap? It's gonna be a select few people persistently and it's not something that people ask, it's folks that want to do it because, you know, not because they have to, but because they want to. And I just want to let all those folks know, we appreciate them for doing that because they don't have to. So that's all I got.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, have, have a few things here. First of all, I was on the DMO when it was first set up and all the hotels and all the officials that were put on that board elected not to take a siphon and that, that is put into their, their charter, so I think you'll find that, that they don't, they don't take a siphon. The hotels weren't taking it because they were part of it and the different representatives, Lonny King being one, Mercedes, I think, was one at the same time, and I think we, there was a vote and it was decided that we would not take a siphon, so there's not a siphon. First of all, Larry, thank you very much for bringing this, thank you for getting up and talking with all your people. I mean, there was a great group here and I'd like to see, you know, their wishes come true, so we'll, we'll work on that, but thank you for having, having all those people here. On the 24th, Congressman, Congresswoman, excuse me, Williams was here and presented the city with a check. the city with a check. The mayor graciously accepted the check along with everyone else, so I want to thank her for, for coming into our city and, and being part of our city. It's, it's not every day that Congresswoman comes by and, and spends time in your city, so I want to thank her for that. Marta had a ribbon cutting that showed some of the work that they did. We were there the other day. Councilman Carr said a few words, but I want to thank Marta for what they're doing in the City of College Park, sprucing up that, and they've got more work to do, but, but thank them very much. Marcus Grissom had a baseball opening. And Michelle, thank you very much for volunteering me to throw in the first pitch that barely made it to the plate, so, anyway. But thanks to all the parents that get involved with, with the recreation programs. They, they make all of our programs work. DMO, great job on Spin the District. And City Manager, I see you at all these events. You're just, you're just, I don't know how you make all the rounds, but you're, you're making all the rounds, and it is appreciated, so thank you very much. Eden Fresh this morning had a ribbon cutting, and thanks to Eden Fresh and all the people that, that brought that to College Park, Anne Brown especially, all of her staff doing a great job in College Park. And to step up to the plate, to listen to the people, to do, have the, the fresh items that they have, it, it's just fantastic. So, I want to thank Anne for what all she does, and Eden Fresh. I just got word the other day that the United Methodist Church is having a, a new preacher named Kimberly Sinkfield will be coming on July the 9th. So, if anybody wants to meet the Methodist preacher at the church, July 9th will be her first day. And lastly, Dwight Baker, you and your team, thank you, thank you very much for all the work that y'all have done. I talked with you today. We had a bunch of, bunch of numbers that y'all gave. I, I've been involved with, with staffing for a long time, and I don't think I've ever seen anything that thorough, so thank you very much for, for what, what you and your team did. Appreciate it very much. That's all.
Councilman Gay?
Okay, great. I think my colleague took care of the acknowledgements, so. The, there's a, that was a centralized reporting that we no longer use. It was I notify College Park. Since then, I have not heard of any other way that we as an organization can, as well as the stakeholders, the citizenry, can report deficiencies. My understanding was that I notify, there were some issues with having to reload the software. But since that time, I've not heard anything about, and, and I just think if you're going to look at reorganization structure, you absolutely need to look at how we can communicate centrally. It holds, it holds departments and, and everyone else, and it makes us more efficient. The second one I have is, there's also frustration with the rentals. I'm having a problem with room-in houses. I live next door to a room-in house. It is so frustrating to live next door to a room-in house for the simple reason is, people come and go, they have lots of cars in the, in the driveway. So, my question is, I was told that a homeowner has the legal right to have as many people in his house as they want to. I don't disagree, but I think we need to look a little bit further because if a homeowner doesn't live in the house or have several houses, and, or his name or her name is on the title, does that mean that they could have a rental house? So, we, I would like for there to be some clarification on what a rental house is versus a homeowner renting out his rooms. My wife won't let us rent out our room because you just can't live there with us. And we have rooms to rent in our house. I live in a relatively large house, and we cannot get any revenue from it. The other thing is the Jack Lungino Scholarship. That was a gift by Wally Park, and that was $65,000. We have not spent those funds. This is the time where our kids are going, applying for colleges. That's a very useful grant. I think it's about $1,250 per student, per semester, who only has a C average. So, I know Michael Hickson was with the Airport Chamber of Commerce. He informed me he's no longer on that board, so we need to see who's going to administer the, the Jack Lungino Scholarship for this upcoming fall school year. Like to thank Chief Cunningham Rogers that had a great town hall meeting. It was very nice, with a great turnout. People from all wards came. Two things that came out of it was that speed humps are still wanted in the community. There's some, there's some people who actually said that they've been asking for speed humps on Virginia Avenue, and, and these people are adamant about it, so we need to discuss with our Public Works Department about those, those particular citizens' requests. White City Road, and you addressed that continues to be an eyesore. However, when I walked White City Road last week to put those flyers, I'm here to report to you that it looks as if it's declining. It looks, it looks as if it's declining. For those people who are recognizing the College Park community, let me also remind you that, you know, we also have other pockets of communities that were here as well. My great-grandmother and grandfather from White City Road, as well as there are other pockets of black communities. So, if we're going to recognize them, I'd like to also be inclusive of. I was with a group this morning who just said he went to the school on, right here on Herschel, the top, Marshall Mitchell, Margaret Mitchell, something. So, let's just try and, the other thing is summer jobs. I heard the mayor of Atlanta talking about his summer job initiative. I don't know if we have jobs to offer, Dr. Baker, but I wish that you could partner with some other agencies to see if we could, you know, I know the airport vendors on the, on the, on the atrium, it's open to the public, tons of job announcements down there. If you could contact some of those vendors and see, Ms. Miller was able to offer jobs, Ms., Ms. Alexandra for the recreation, but we need to try and get jobs for the, for the students, okay? And also, what came out of the town hall was the adjustments for the tax exemption. I think we agreed that there would be some type of adjustment, but we were told at the town hall meeting that it has not been worked out. So, people are looking for some clarity on the utility bill adjustment in exchange for what they may perceive to be a tax exemption. So, that, I was told that's being worked out through Philip Latona's office, and if you could maybe put some clarity on when that's going to be worked out. And I think I have completed everything. That's it.
Thank you, sir. I want to echo Councilman Allen's sentiments in thanking Congresswoman, Congresswoman Williams and her staff. It is not, it is not every city that has a U.S. Senator, member of Congress, come through here and share great news about how they are helping us continue to build the community that we deserve. And we are grateful for their efforts every single day, how they take our needs and, and put them on a federal platform and bring resources back to our community. So, thank you, Congresswoman Williams. Thank you all your, all, to your staff as well for all the work that you do. And expounding a little bit on the Eden Fresh ribbon cutting today, they've made a $3 million investment into that store. It is amazing what this company has done for our community. And Anne Brown is, gosh, just a national treasure. She's wonderful, and we are so lucky to have her through ups and downs. It's just so outstanding what they've done to the store to make sure that the community is served in so many different ways, and just grateful for the opportunity to celebrate that investment this morning. Want to thank Ms. Ames and her team for all the work that you did on Georgia Cities Week. As Chair of Georgia Cities Week this year, you made us look good. I, I had folks last week at the Board of Directors meeting for GMA, talking about all the things that we were doing in College Park, and I know that this was a team effort, but you spearheaded it, and so we are so grateful because there were events every single day. I know that we exceed, far exceeded expectations for the amount of ice cream people would eat at a Touch a Truck event, and we did so happily, and I think we had a great opportunity to see more ways to engage our community, and we are thankful to your entire team for the, the whole week. It was phenomenal. And tacking on to that, thanks to the ATL Airport District and everyone who went in for Spin the District. And Chief, thank you to your team for making sure that everyone was safe during, during that event. It was wonderful. I have no idea how the weather decided to cooperate in the afternoon, but I'm so grateful it did because we were a little bit cold on the family ride in the morning, but thanks to Drip Through Coffee for making sure that we were warm with some coffee and filled up with donuts as well. So, it was just a great, great event. Want to thank Ms. Alexander and all the folks who set up a, a conference with Wells Fargo and on the tour for the Ion Project. We had folks from across the country who came to see that project a little over two weeks ago, I think. And so, it was a great opportunity to showcase what communities can do when everyone's rowing in the, in the same direction, and we got a lot of positive feedback from that, and we got an opportunity to show off the Six West Project as well to folks who might be interested from coast to coast. I want to thank Ms. Abdullah, Mr. Evans, for your perseverance, for your dedication. This, this move to take Price's Barbershop off of the, the rolls as, as, as part of our portfolio is, to me, a no-brainer because we need to take every step to honor the community that built this city. So, thank you for everything that you do to, to make sure that we are walking in our purpose in that regard. Also, want to thank Mr. Richardson for his efforts. The Electric Cities of Georgia were here last week, and their board meeting was here. They held it at the GICC. I think they had an amazing tour of the arena as well, saw the pictures, and overall, very well-received, and it's always a great opportunity to showcase our city to the other folks who are, who have municipal electric authorities in their own communities. And we looked pretty good, and they saw the world premiere of our State of the City Address as well. So, I want to thank Icon Filmworks for their work on that and our communications staff. So, I know that we've got some additional business to discuss in executive session, so at this time, I'll take a motion to re-enter executive session for the purposes of discussion of real estate and litigation.
Show move.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. We will enter into executive session.
Yeah, and we, we also, you know, you were questioning earlier about the restructuring.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
What I said. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie up here on this stage. Did you hear me?
I heard you. I don't know if you heard.
I don't think he did.
You know what you're talking about.
I was trying to look at you.
You look really absurd.
Tell your father everything you have.
I was trying to say.
The issue again about, oh, my house.
And then she did to her as well, like that.
Well, you were there. Okay, never mind. Just sorry, I'll fix it now. You might get something like that. Well, never mind. You were there. Okay, so. So, I would, I would write, tap into them.
Yeah.
You don't want to do a color person else, man?
Yeah.
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 I don't know what's going to be, but.
I don't think it's on my screen.
It's just, I'm just so.
Yeah, yeah. One step at a time.
You don't have to wait forever.
I'll never put money down in either direction. I don't want to jinx it.
See you at a good night.
Don't laugh at that. It's not that funny.
That you try.
Yeah, I've got an executive session that we didn't grab up. I, I think, they like, it felt like I got tricked. I feel like Jackson told me I was the only, my agent, I was the only one on their executive session, and then I walked in and I got blown.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, Eden Fresh, it looks like it, it said something about being employee-owned, you know, that sort of.
I really don't know much about Eden Fresh, actually. I, because there's, I know they just said they were pre-able, you kind of, they've been on the saltwater essentially.
Yeah, that's, I didn't know, um, yeah. And, but I just heard them say something like that. They said something like it was, I thought I read someone say this morning at the, at the event, the Fairview Inn, that it was employee-owned, and what I'm reading is that they do.
Yeah, I've got an executive session that we didn't grab up. And I, look, I think, they like, it felt like I got tricked. I thought Jackson told me I was the only, my age of, I almost the only one on their executive session. And then I walked in and I got flopped. Oh, yeah. So even Thresh, it looks like it, it said something about being employee-owned, you know, that sort of.
I really don't know much about Thresh, actually. I, because for, I know he does that, or he don't, because I know he's been on salt for essentially.
Yeah, that's. I didn't know, um, yeah. And but I just heard him say something like that. They said something like it was, I thought I heard someone say this morning at the event, that they're no pain, that it was employee-owned. And what I'm reading is that they do fun, they do so, fun sourcing. And that they wind up having like hyper-local.
So wait a minute, so it's like, community investment into schools? So basically it's like three big actors of schools?
Oh, you know my history, my state of Wisconsin.
Wisconsin.
Uh-huh. You can't tell what my annoying nasal pleasant.
Okay, remember me this, what's in Wisconsin?
What's in Wisconsin?
What's in Wisconsin?
Besides being my hackers?
Besides my. Look, oh, it's one of my favorite teams.
Okay, because you're socialist.
I truly love the Packers. Hey, airlockers, fans keep beating the game, right? But, what's it?
What's in Wisconsin? It's just pleasant. It's just, it's boring and free. People are really nice. Kids start drinking a beer at fourteen. After all. I, it's just really pleasant. It's so cute. You know, what's weird is Lake Michigan. You look at the map, it's like it's a lake, but when you're there, it's like an ocean, you know? It's huge. You don't want to go to Chicago or.
Well, I've not been up that far before, so I mean, so I, I know where it is.
Yeah, and so when you're there, you're like, it's very beautiful and impressive. Um, it takes hours to cross them. You can't just like get across them both. You cannot, you would be really dumb. I mean, you could.
I don't think they're about people on that fallen barrel.
Yeah, it's just really pleasant. It's close to, it's, you know, close to Chicago. And Milwaukee's got some very cool stuff, uh, water, a lot of cool stuff that they figured out. But I mean, I would say, like, me growing up in Wisconsin, the best thing about Wisconsin is I could get to Chicago pretty fast.
So I must want to see with Canada a lot as well?
No, no, it's too far. Wisconsin's pretty big. I mean, like, it's not like if you live in, you know, you live in North Georgia, you're not from the Savannah every day.
Oh, no, no, no. What, okay, then first, what part, what part of Wisconsin?
Yeah, so it's not far from Milwaukee, like, hour north of Milwaukee. And then I grew up, actually, on a farm when I, you know, before we moved over closer to Milwaukee. I grew up on a farm and I always do like the summer of Wisconsin, so, so we like right on the, right on the, not far from Green Bay. Yeah, not far from Green Bay. So where my mother's family was from, they all came over from Germany. Yeah, boy. And, uh, I mean, yeah, it's just really.
Yeah, but that's pretty much as long as it is.
All the Germans.
Germans, Norse, let's say Norse ones in Montana.
Yeah, Swedes, like Swedes and Germans, like fifty percent of people are German.
Well, you know, America was, well, speaking German, at least halfway.
Well, there were schools in Wisconsin that were German.
When I, I took German for four years, part of it was English.
You're like first things first.
Yeah, well, no, I took German, right, because my thing was this one, I didn't want to take French because. No, see, I didn't want to take French. Spanish, you just never use. I said, German is, you know.
The words that are the longest in the.
Well, no, 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 my thing was the trite, because it's a Germanic language, right? You know, we have a few words that are similar, I mean, you know? And then I realized they give me these poison in German.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna make it.
And it just gets worse and worse when you start digging into the ground.
To get, yeah, then similar, like so many subjects that know that, um, yeah. But I think Spanish, uh, the grammar in Spanish, actually, maybe it was, I don't know. I feel like the Spanish subject was harder to read than the German.
See, if I was very smart, I'd go to Dutch, I should have taken Dutch first and then come with the German first. Because Dutch, no, Dutch is, if you, Dutch is almost mutually interconnected with his. Like, if you listen to a Dutch person, you go.
Oh, no, I, when I was in Germany, I would get thrown off on the TV. I was like, why don't I understand them? It's German, right? Like, no, it's Dutch. It sounds like it's German.
It sounds German, but if you're an English speaker, you would listen to something, you're like, that sounds vaguely, you know? It's like you can pick up on a few words. It's, uh, it's like, I, I think, I think Dutch first and then try to go with.
I love that you learned German four years. You're really stuck with it.
I genuinely tried. I, it's, I, I mean, I think it's interesting, like, which is just, it's not, when you try.
No, I, I find it all language higher, though. I mean, I do, I've been fortunate and could indulge in learning some languages, but it's not easy for me. I don't remember stuff and I'm not good to like memorize. And you just, there's no getting over that. You have to just, but reading, like, through literature, and I think for me with German, it was reading, like, the poetry and reading out loud. But I love, I know everyone says how harsh it is, but you hear it, it's like. I don't know, like, Chinese got something like soft to it, um, you know, and so anyway, that helped me. Because I, you know, would read it out loud and enjoy it, you know that. But this is funny, my husband, um, his first wife was German, like, German, German. Like, born in Germany, East Germany. And she, um, it was so miserable there, like, like he.
I'm like, when you say East Germany, you didn't have to say miserable, that comes with the.
I know, like, how else are you gonna survive? Um, and, um, so, like, the last thing he wanted was to know that one of my favorite things is reading German out loud. He's like, I don't want to ever hear it. I don't want potatoes. I don't want German, like, he's like, you, he's like, of all people I have fallen in love with is another German. He's like, the world is big and you're like, narrow it to another, the same country.
Yeah, I had a. And then we make that towards a more place in the. See, you know, with Western, I mean, you should get a variant.
Those kind of variants.
Exactly. You got a Rhinella, you know, you got a, you know, business-minded person from Fight First.
Look at you, you've got it all covered.
And then it's.
You're crashing, you have plenty of this much.
Then it's getting quite a bit of East German, I mean.
So did you study, did you college German or did you study?
Uh, actually, middle, middle school, high school.
Where the hell did you go that even had German?
Believe it or not, Karen, Georgia, are you familiar with the online schools here?
Yeah.
Okay, George Cybercat. Uh, I did that for a kid at home, I don't have, no, it's my first, but I still have my second here, but anyways. So they all, honestly, G C Aker, hey, they back in the school, uh, the state gave them full funding. Whenever they asked for was like, they were.
They figured out.
No, like, they were comparable to places like Woodward and, um, Westminster.
My brother-in-law, um, taught there, uh, through the, uh, he's like one of the chief administrators of the program now.
Really?
State. Yeah, and he was a French and German instructor, um, and then got into administration. He was teaching at, um, Centennial, is that how he spoke?
Centennial. Yeah, I've heard of Centennial.
Um, David Roswell area, which, most suburbs. But, but anyway, that's interesting. He was always, he, when he got fell into it, he's like, I found my home. He's like, there's rigor and then.
I'm just gonna say it's war.
Uh, this guy, he's David, David Alexander is this guy, David Alexander. So, um, I'm not sure.
And you said you, you an issue here?
He's, he's now an administrator.
Now, okay, but.
And he was, I don't know how much he did online only, like, he only did some teaching, I feel like, the last like five years.
Okay, yeah.
If you took.
I graduated twenty-three, so I.
Wow. Wait, you graduated high school in twenty-two?
So I'm like, I'm like.
That's funny.
The, the.
But that, you know, that's so solid. And like, so could you write, um, like geography and all that?
Oh, yeah, history is my favorite.
Is it?
So I, this is.
Yeah.
That, that's my, I never learned enough of language because we love history so much. Because I really love to go and pick them up acting.
Yeah.
Uh, I know about as much as Latin, I mean, you know, Caesar came here, so he's like, you know, kill you, I think, you know, till, you know?
Right, right.
España, uh.
It was, it was uno, whatever. Right there's one.
Yeah, you know, you just start.
Under, uh, Almetawell, that's where, uh, uh.
Uh, did your, uh.
Yeah, that's what people say is French. I'm like, sure. Maybe, I can express it really well. It sounds like it, but that's all I got.
Le volant? Who, who wasn't even French, aren't you?
Wasn't even French, those, uh.
It's good for Corsican.
Corsican?
Corsican.
Corsican?
It's a Corsican.
Oh, my God, the Corsicans. I, um, met a crazy Corsican.
Really?
Uh-huh. Um, when we were traveling last year and I wasn't even like really registering like what that meant. We were, he, we were actually in Paris or somewhere, we were in France. We were traveling to Spain, but he was telling us about a restaurant. It wasn't like we were going to, but we were going to a restaurant and he was like, he was like, this is my friend. And I was like, this is the restaurant to go to. The other Corsican, like.
Yeah, yeah, you're just sitting there going.
Um, I know, and I was like, that's so cool, but my Corsican, I don't even.
Well, you're, you're front, you're sitting there looking at a map in your hand.
Yeah, not blinded, like the files, the files, I'm not, I'm not gonna pretend, they were, they were not, they didn't exist, so.
Long Island somewhere in the sea, you know?
Um.
What, are you?
I'm ready.
You do?
I'm ready.
He's got all these interesting things. You know he speaks German?
What?
I know.
I do not speak German.
You just did. You took German for four years.
I took French for four years and I don't remember any of it.
Actually, French with two and a half.
I know how to recite a poem.
All right.
But don't ask me what it means.
Give it up. You want to hear it anyway?
No, okay. That's why the poem goes along.
Well, originally it was a poem.
It was.
Are they looking for me? Am I up?
Next one.
You looking for me?
I'm not.
Do they say, uh, to be happy?
Eh, it's a poem, it's a poem.
You saw it in the hallway?
Yeah, he went, yeah, he went back to the door.
You with him? He with you?
He's in there.
Yeah, he's in the hallway or he's somewhere.
You call my hood skin. Hey, lady. Hey, Wisconsin. Hi. No, so they go back to the. Everybody going with me here. Gee. It's hard. Hello. What's that? What you doing here? This is not no egg and cheese. I don't want any parts of that. I got excited for the long. How they work? You ain't going? You? Hmm? Okay. She said, I should not be in all this stuff. She said that she knows me and all this stuff. I did not have one. No, I just feel like you are in a cage. Hey Sean. How are ya? How was school? Very good. Hmm? For what? How are they testing this week? Y'all not testing this week? You ready? How is left? Oh! Listen. I'm gonna I'm gonna lay great first blood. Yeah. Midnight. Next day. It's like you're not making any difference. I'd like to hear everything from you today for proper reason. I'll say thank you after I'm done. I have to go. What? What's that? I'm scared. I'm scared. I'm scared. I I didn't know that this thing. And now the other one? Hey, I'm nervous. Here. What? Whoa. That one. Is it apple or is? I don't know. I just feel like it's just black. Black. Yeah, the new blade. It is clean.
Okay. And how much you want? How much you get? That one is fine.
You've got kids, so I don't think I should.
Alright. Okay.
We just. And literally just started.
That's what's up with you. But uh you like me. I'm gonna be current this morning.
I didn't know. Yeah. No, I thought. They said we need to do this. And I just it is all the same. Didn't take me very hard. It's all the same. You know, it's a it's a. It's a it's a. Ah, yeah. And then it's ever. Uh.
Well. When you answer that, you can go down.
Yeah, I know.
And and.
You're.
Alright? Alright.
You don't know this law. I don't know. It's not.
Thank you.
Good evening. We are back and it is 10:59 PM. I'll take a motion to exit executive session at this time.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor.
Aye.
Councilman Gate? What is your...
What is the motion?
Exit executive session. No, no, we have got a second. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve a settlement with Atlanta Restaurant Partners in the amount of $59,000.
So moved.
No, no, hold on one second, Councilman Clay. The settlement with Atlanta Restaurant Partners in the amount of $59,604.51.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. And lastly, I'll take a motion to approve this executive session minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous as well. At this time, at 11 o'clock PM, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.